I'll call to order the meeting of the April 6, 2016. Committee of the whole meeting, if you all rise for an invocation from Bishop Dedman.
Eternal God, we come with thankful hearts of your favor and blessings upon us. We ask now that you will provide this council with the wisdom from your chamber that they might govern this community with the heart of the people at hand. We ask that each department, each department head will be filled with your love. Bless this community is our prayer. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with no creative injustice or wrong.
We'll be changing the order in the agenda. Item listed as number seven, a presentation swearing in of Officer Zachary Robinson. We'll move that to next.
It's always an exciting opportunity to add some to the police department. This young man comes from Stowe and Potsgrove, Zach? So he's a local guy and he's pretty excited. We're excited to have him. He'll start tonight at eight o'clock for the overnight shift, right? Okay. I'd like to call up Zachary Robinson first and also his wife and Bob and Bishop. Would you come up too?
Okay, this is the police officer. Both of office from Pottstown Police Department. Having been appointed as a police officer with the borough of Pottstown in the county of Montgomery and the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, I
I, Zach Robinson.
Do solemnly swear
Sowlandly swear.
That I will support,
And I will support.
Obey, defend,
Obey and defend.
The Constitution of the United States,
Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the Commonwealth,
Constitution of the Commonwealth.
And enforce all the laws thereof,
And enforce all the laws thereof.
Including those of the borough of Pottstown.
Including those of the borough of Pottstown.
And that I will support,
And I will support.
Obey,
Obey.
Defend,
Defend.
And enforce these laws
And enforce these laws.
Without consideration
Without consideration.
To a person's race,
To a person's race.
Color,
Color.
Sex,
Sex.
Religious creed,
Religious creed.
Sexual orientation,
Sexual orientation.
Age,
Age.
National origin,
National origin.
Ancestry,
Ancestry.
Handicap,
Handicap.
Or disability.
Or disability.
I swear to discharge
I swear to discharge.
The duties of my office
The duties of my office.
With fidelity and honor.
With fidelity and honor.
To all who shall see these presents greetings. This is to certify that I, Sharon V. Thomas, Mayor of the Borough of Pottstown in the County of Montgomery and Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, by virtue of the authority vested in me by the Borough Charter as amended and supplemented by the General Borough Act of 1915 and supplements authorizing a police course for boroughs and for other purposes and pursuant to appointment as a police officer by town council of this borough, have this day sworn Zachary Robinson as a police officer of said borough and that he is authorized and empowered to make arrests upon probable cause with or without a warrant, subject nevertheless to the laws of Pennsylvania and the United States and that said Zachary Robinson shall serve as such police officer during the pleasure of the mayor and town council.
Infrastructure, councillor Culp.
No meeting.
No meeting. Economic development, Ms. Batdorf.
Thank you. I have a few things to report. Momentum, our spring issue, is hot off the digital press, but I do have a few hard copies here for the public if you'd like to take them with you. Momentum is published four times a year by our Partners for Success. It's all positive stories about Pottstown, things that are happening, programs, projects. For this issue, we have the Powell Manatoni coming up in May, the CARES and Habitat for Humanity event on April 15th, among many others. So I just encourage everybody to take a look at that. If you'd like to sign up for that digital newsletter, you can sign up via the paid website, paid.com. It's also available on the borough's website as well. I do have a grant spreadsheet for you this evening. It's been uploaded. We have many grants on the agenda this evening and we also have a few part items. We have a part marketing promotion for children. It's a poster contest and it launched on March 28th. You can pick up a free art kit onboard one of our buses. It is a poster and a set of crayons and we asked what is transportation in Pottstown? We are encouraging children to fill them out and give them back to a bus driver by April 18th. We'll announce winners for each grade level on April 22nd for Earth Day. So we're looking forward to some promotional content straight from our children who are actually riding the bus a lot more these days. So we're looking forward to that. Okay, that's what I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, transportation, councillor Culp.
No meeting.
No meeting. Councillor Kirkland, Rickettsunder.
Yes, I just wanted me to mention about the summer camp, which will be starting the third week of June, actually June 20th through August 12th. Applications won't be available starting April 13th. It's for ages six years to 15 years. It'll be 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM.
Thank you. Pottstown School Board report from Kurt Heidel. Good evening.
Good evening. Give you some of the listings of the goings-on in the Pottstown School District over the past month and what we have looking ahead. On March 15th, it was a race against time for the Pottstown High School Culinary Arts Program. They competed in their annual chopped challenge. The competition is modeled after the Food Network's reality cooking show Chopped. Eugene and Sheila Dugan, owner of Grumpy's Restaurant on High Street, started the challenge four years ago as a way to give back to the community. Mr. Dugan, aka Grumpy, said the competition gets better and more challenging every year. Students had one hour to create a sandwich and 30 minutes to create a cupcake. As an added challenge, students had a mystery ingredient which were required to use in the dish, which was revealed right before the competition. Sandwiches had to include a chicken breast, the hot pepper, raspberries, and a chocolate pop tart. Cupcakes had to be created using white cake mix, dark chocolate, raspberries, and a green pepper as well. Student chefs were allowed to add additional ingredients to make their dishes tasty. Senior Kayla Wise won the sandwich portion with a raspberry marinated chicken breast topped with a chocolate balsamic sauce and a green pepper spread. Juniors Felicity Patton and Jalen Chestnut won as a team in the cupcake challenge for their vanilla cupcake topped with a lemon raspberry buttercream frosting and minced green peppers. Prizes include $50 in cash and a gift basket and the dishes will be on local restaurant menus. Winning sandwich will be on Grumpy's menu for a year and the winning cupcake will be on the menu of Beverly's Pastry Shop. Part of the proceeds from each winning cupcake and sandwich will go back into the high school's culinary arts program. Sheila Dugan has stated more than $600 has been raised for this program over the last four years. On the 21st, our woodwinds and brass ensembles from both the middle and the high school performed at the state Capitol for the music in our school's month lunchtime concert series. The students enjoyed a lunch at Strawberry Square followed by their performances and a tour of the Capitol Building. Pottstown Middle School eighth graders presented a science fair on the 23rd of March. Jennifer Witterbottom, the exposed co-organizer, said, an eighth grade science teacher, said she couldn't think of a better way to let kids teach kids because honestly, anytime kids need to learn something, they looked to their friends and their peers. About 228th graders were separated into groups of four and had to research energy projects that could be taught to younger students. Students from the school district's fourth, fifth, sixth, and seventh grades learned from four types of projects, working models, replicas, trifold posters, and games. Parents and community members also had the opportunity to learn about these projects that Monday night. Displays included working wind turbines, a replica of a coal fire plant, board games, and a game that needed wind power to win a boat race. On April 1st, Pottstown High School classroom assistant Regina Asheimer was awarded with the Coretta Scott King Award at the 21st YMCA Tribute to Exceptional Women at an event in Spring City. She was recognized for being an agent of change and an advocate for empowerment for girls, committed to social justice, peace, and equality in human rights. A memorial award was presented in honor of Sandy Zuccaro, a former Pottstown Middle School special education teacher who passed away in November of 2015 after a valiant battle with brain cancer. She was recognized for her significant impact on the lives of women and families during her life. She created the nonprofit Mother Goose Read to Me program with the goal of educating parents about the importance of reading to infants and providing books to low-income families. We also want to congratulate our other district nominees, high school cheerleading coach Christina Weiss, middle school cheerleading coach Janelle Warmer, and additional congratulations to our Peak Partner YMCA pre-K counts teacher Kimberly Howater. At our school board meeting this past month, the bid was awarded to David A. Mainz and Associates for the replacement of our flat roof at the administration building. It's a $200,000 job that is going to be starting this month. The school board also approved a request by the Mosaic Land Trust to build a community garden on the grounds of Barth Elementary School. We are looking forward to helping the students of Barth as well as the neighbors of Barth, including the residents of the Bright Hope Community, benefit from these gardens. It's also our hope that we will expand the program next year to include more elementary schools. We also want to welcome Mr. Richard Hug, who was appointed as the district's new director of technology. He'll be replacing Tammy Wolf, who will be retired at the end of this school year. In Trojan Sports, the baseball team defeated Upper Marion on Monday, April 4th, nine to seven. Mason Penny Packers, two-run, two-out single in the top of the ninth, provided the winning margin. The Trojans improved their record to two and one. And on the 29th of March, Emily Isell delivered five goals and one assist. Marjorie Pearson had four goals and Janie Jones contributed three goals in Pottstown's 16-4 non-league girls' crosswind over Norristown. The girls' team is now two and two on season. Looking ahead, the high school's ninth annual college fair will take place on April 7th from 9:30 to 11:00 AM in the morning. On Saturday, April 16th, Peak, Pottstown celebrates young childrens and the YMCA Healthy Kids Day will take place at Pottstown High School from 1:00 to 3:00 PM. There'll be lots of fun events for kids, including a petting zoo, a clown, DJs, mascots, and games. Over 40 organizations will provide helpful information for parents as well. On Thursday, March, April 21st, from 5:00 to 8:00 PM, the school district will be working their PK and kindergarten registration. That event takes place at the Pottstown Middle School Auditorium. Also, on the 21st, Dr. Sparagama, superintendent of our school, will be awarded the Tri-County Chamber of Commerce Andrew J. Parvis Excellent in Local Government and Education Award. That will take place at the Tri-County Chamber of Commerce's annual dinner at the Riverfront Golf Club. Our next regular school board meeting will take place on April 25th at 7:00 PM at the high school cafeteria. We are still asking for community support and then inputs about cost-saving measures that will go into our 2016-2017 budget. On Wednesday, the 27th, the Pottstown High School Spring Concert will take place at the high school auditorium, followed on the 28th by the instrumental string, Spring Concert. And that is also 7:00 at the high school auditorium. The Pottstown High School Art Show will be taking place from May 2nd through May 13th throughout the high school. The Rupert Elementary School Arts and Music Festival will also take place on May 2nd. Barth's Music Festival, Arts, and Spring Concert will take place on May 3rd. High School National Honor Society banquet on the 3rd of May as well. Reading Olympics at the Pottstown Middle School, also on May 3rd. And believe it or not, the junior/senior prom will take place on May 6th. That'll be right after our next meeting. And that is what's going on with the Pottstown School District. Thank you.
Ad-hoc zoning and animal.
We're still muddling through impervious space and setbacks in zoning. We're also looking at the signs ordinances and retail within residential neighborhoods. So we have nothing new to present to council on that this time.
Okay, how about animal?
Animal, I would just, I just want to add one thing and I do this out of love for the animals, but I do recognize if there's not a process in place, then when somebody's not available to do it, it goes away. So I do the kennel laundry, which comes out to a little over $300 a year out-of-pocket expenses for me between laundry, detergent, dryer sheets, and, you know, actually money for the machines. So if there's a process in place where we can set up, where we can accept maybe donations at the water treatment plant, we have a lot of wonderful animal people down there that would be happy to take donations, whether monetary or detergents, bleaches, fabric soft receipts that I can pick up when I pick up the laundry, that would be wonderful.
Thank you. Okay, mayor's report.
Thank you, President Wayne. I'm going to abbreviate my comments today. We have quite a few presentations and a very long agenda, but I would like to recognize the work of many law enforcement personnel as well as our own department, which showed a very strong presence at a youth and law enforcement forum that was held recently at Montgomery County Community College here at the West Campus. It provided an opportunity to bring youth together with police officers, with lawyers, and with judges as well to discuss and analyze ways to prevent situations that are non-confrontational and are not involving arrests, but just routine stops and such. They showed how the dynamic shifts with attitude, how the dynamic can shift with body language. So I think it was a good, it was a good opportunity. I missed the afternoon section, but I did hear that the children were, the teenagers were kind of thrown aback when the officers took their role as to some of the posturing that they do. So I think it was very educational and it was very informative and it was the beginning of a discussion to reduce arrests. So I felt that was very, very positive engagement for our young people and well for the departments that were able to attend from all over the county and as well people from the Philadelphia Attorney's Office, the district attorney's office in Philadelphia. And that's all I'd like to say. I'd like to comment on the agenda items during the presentations, if you don't mind.
Okay, thank you. I did skip one under subcommittees, the safety report from Chief Drumheller.
Thank you. I really only have one item to talk to you about and it's the South Street project. We have finally gotten all the interviews that we could done. We've interviewed some businesses. Councilwoman Miller pointed out some people that we could talk to. And basically, on the consensus of all the dynamics that are down there, it's my decision not to do anything with South Street. Let it, let it continue to be the way it is and we'll monitor it for a year and we'll go on. There were a couple pressing issues on it, but the bottom line is it was, it was a mixed bag of who wants change and who doesn't. It was no clear, you know, it was pretty close to 50/50 of people who wanted it and didn't want it. So based on the neighborhood input and the businesses that we spoke to, who were all opposed of it, we're going to just shove that project.
It'll stay as is?
As is. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Now, managers' report.
Thank you, Ms. Wayne. Sound like a broken record, but I want to let you know that the, looks like the code-related punch list items have been taken care of and hopefully this week, the sprinkler system and alarm system will be tested and we should be ready for occupancy at the public works facility. There are some final change orders that are being reviewed by the architect and once satisfied, I should have a final cost, project cost for you. You may recall that last month, some articles appeared in both the Mercury and the Reading Eagle regarding the Carousel and the fact that it's not yet open to the public. And reading those articles, frankly, it was easy to come to the conclusion that the borough was responsible for those delays and making the Carousel not able to open their doors. In fact, I believe Mr. Arms brought the issue up over his frustration over those perceived issues. And since last month's meeting, I received a letter from the president of the Carousel, Mr. Wassnock, that I'd like to take the opportunity to read to council, which I think will clarify what the problems are. Dear Mark, Terry, who's a member of the board, shared with me the fact that council was disturbed by some recent news articles and I cannot blame them. At no time did I put the blame on the borough for the delays. In fact, I made a point to both reporters that this is not the borough's fault, it is not the borough's fault for the delays. I told them that we have to comply with code rules, some of which are new, and also that we need to get a new architectural design drawn and approved. The only problem I saw was the fact that the water source was not found, but that's going to be resolved. Unfortunately, I have no control over the spin that's put on it. The Carousel Group has always had a good relationship with the borough, especially under your tenure. You've always been very supportive of our mission and I hope that we will continue to work together in a positive direction towards the good of our community. In regard, the reference Mr. Wassnock made to the water, he is correct. We do not have the water hooked up yet. Couple of reasons. One, we're searching for the opportunity to tap into the main at the appropriate location and two, the winter has been brutal on our street staff. Since the Carousel facility does not have any piping inside or any facilities to deliver water to, it would be ludicrous to take water to the building at this time. So with that said, I hope that clarifies the position of the Carousel. The next item I have is I want to raise an issue with council and ask for your guidance. Each month, as you're well aware, various organizations request waivers of fees for events, be they park rentals, electrical usage, permit fees, or whatever. And in fact, I believe there's two more on the agenda this month, items 27 and 28, I believe they are. And each month, as directed to do so, I bring these requests before council. Each month, seeming disinclined to do so and really not wanting to waive fees, council addresses the request. And it seems to me that there should be a better way of handling these requests. And with that said, I would ask council to give some consideration to providing guidance as to how they would like to see this approach, the request for fee waivers moving forward in the future. The next item I want to let council know about is that we've been notified by the county that PMA, the Pennsylvania Emergency Agency, has declared January 22nd and 23rd as a disaster, the snow event. And as a result, we should be receiving financial assistance to reimburse the costs associated with response to the storm. Obviously, this is good news and that the reimbursement should help us cover overtime, fuel, salt used by our staff, contractor costs incurred for snow removal, and hopefully the costs that we incurred or were going to incur in repairing the storm damaged stream bank and the pedestrian bridge in Riverfront Park. Council may recall that our last joint Borough Council/School Board meeting, a four-person ad hoc committee was formed to iron out the issues that are hampering our ability to put the LERTA in place. I want to let council know that we've received from each member of the committee, a list of suggestions, or their list of suggestions, of what they'd like to see incorporated into the LERTA ordinance or the school district resolution. I will see to it either before you leave this evening or via email that the list is distributed to all councilors and the solicitor for future discussion, hopefully at next month's meeting, so that we can start moving this forward and get it done. It's my understanding that Ms. Stillwell, the president of the school board, will be distributing the list of suggestions to her board and their solicitor as well, so that they can go through the same process. Last but certainly not least, some of you may recall that several months ago, councillor Miller asked staff to look into the development of a citizens' leadership academy here in Pottstown. I'm pleased to announce that as of today, in fact, it went live at 4:00 today. Jenny, would you pass them out, please? We are taking applications via the borough's website for borough residents, property and business owners who have property or a business in the borough who are interested in participating in a 10-week academy designed to assist in becoming better acquainted with borough operations, policies, and procedures. The Pottstown Citizens Leadership Academy will meet for 10 sessions, beginning Tuesday, May 3rd, from 6:30 PM to 8:30 PM, running through and culminating in a graduation ceremony during the July Borough Council Committee of the Whole meeting. Anyone who's interested in participating should go to the borough's website. If you go to the academy page, which is located under the residents tab, there is a description of the program and an online application. And I suggest register, anybody who's interested, that they register as soon as possible because we're controlling class size at 20, or limiting class size to 20 participants. And that's the end of my report.
Thank you. Youth Aid Panel, there's a presentation. Good evening.
Good evening. May I sit here? Thank you. I'm Frank Strunk. Thank you for the invitation. I'm Frank Strunk. I'm executive director here of the Youth Aid Panel, which is under the Montgomery County Juvenile Authority District Attorney. What does the juvenile authority do for the Youth Aid Panel is very simple. We do get referrals from the police departments from the area on individual juveniles under the age of 18 who really do things very foolishly, but they are arrested and there is a charge pending. What we try to do with the panel, and there are eight volunteer panel members, we don't get paid, I like to say that, but we're good at what we do. A number of us, I have been on the panel for 13 years. Couple of my associates have been on the panel for four, three, and two. So we move people around quite a bit, but nonetheless, the juvenile comes before the panel and we're not to determine whether they're guilty or not guilty of the charge that has been pending and we have the charge in front of us. What we try to do is come to a resolution of what happened. What did you do? Why'd you do it? And how can you prevent not doing it again? That charge is sitting out there, so we have to do some sort of a resolution to eliminate the charge. And what we do is during the interview process, each panel member has an opportunity to ask questions, to try to determine whether or not this is a future repetitive situation or whether it was just a once-and-done silly thing that happened. Once the determination is made, we come up with a resolution. The panel is not a pass-go situation. The resolution is that the individual juvenile must maintain relationship with an assigned member of the panel for a month. They call every week. Everything is fine. I'm not in any more trouble. Everything is good, et cetera, et cetera. They're also required to present to the panel a letter of apology for either the parent or grandparent, whoever the guardian may be, also the individual who's offended. They also have to come up with a situation whereas if there is any damage to a property, there is a dollar figure assigned to it from the police department and we come up with a resolution for them to make payment. The payment has to be made within that 30-day period or one month. We have two panels that meet monthly. One is on a Thursday and one is on a Monday. So we try to keep these juveniles moving through the system as rapidly as we can because it is only a one-time offense only coming in here. So if they get in trouble while they're in the program, they're null and void and they're immediately excused from the program and that charge then is filed with the district attorney's office, juvenile authority. So it, it's very important to keep these kids moving. The projects that we try to determine whether or not if it's a retail theft, is it once-and-done? Was it something really stupid? Or if we feel it's going to be a repetitive going forward, we can get them into a retail theft program with Montgomery County. We can get them into a drug or alcohol program if that's determined that they're in drugs and alcohol and that's pretty common around here. The panel gets referrals on these juveniles from the borough of Pottstown, Potsgrove, West, Lower, Upper, school districts, Pottstown, Potsgrove. We also get referrals from New Hanover Township and Douglas, Montgomery. So you can see where they all come through to us. Yes, there are only eight members on our panels and there are two of them, but in Montgomery County, there are 54 panels currently in operation. Some statistics I'd like to read to you over the past 10 years. Youth Aid Program accomplished the task of having addressed 7,985 juveniles. Now, these are people, kids, that would normally be in the juvenile authority that came through this program and graduated. this program and graduated. The police departments, we deal with 28 to 42 police departments sending in referrals. Not every month do we get a referral from a police department, but depends on school. When school is in, we're active. School districts, there's 21 of them. The number of panel meetings that take place every month, 37 to 41. The success rate, 90 to 98 percent. Last year alone, these panels, 54, saved the county close to $98,000 in monies that would have been spent if these kids ended up in the Juvenile Authority and ended up going on probation and had a probation officer assigned to them. That's a lot of our tax money, you me. Restitution that was collected for damages, $92,037. And the number of trained volunteers, volunteers that are trained at no cost to them, but there were 651 trained over this period of time, and the training period is 16 hours. Just our panel alone here in Pottstown, Potts Grove, we had 495 referrals, two panels. We can get through in an evening at least three interviews and three exits. That's about all the time on the lots. The referrals, as I said, come through the police department, and we really appreciate it, because it takes time for each officer to interview the juvenile, establish the charge, get the parent or the guardian to agree to have that child come through the panel, and the child themselves must agree. It's a lot of paperwork. Paperwork that could be easily pushed aside and refer the child to Juvenile Authority, and they'll handle it. So we on the panel appreciate every policeman who takes the time to send us the referral. I'd love to call them and say thanks for their referral, but on behalf of the juvenile kids in this area, I'm going to thank them for them. Major success story, and I'll leave you with this. We had an individual who was arrested, something really foolish, but nonetheless, the charge was pending. This individual had an appointment to a military academy. If that charge would have been filed, he would have lost that appointment. Whereas he came through our panel, he completed the resolution, he was discharged from our panel. That discharge then was sent to the police officer who referred them in, the Juvenile Authority of Montgomery County, who were waiting for it to clear, and that individual, within 30 days from that clearance, ended up going to the Military Academy. Two years later, he comes back on leave from the Military Academy. He looked me up and wanted to thank us for what we did for him. That's a good success story, and there are many of them like that. So we appreciate the borough allowing us to meet in that room next door every month and get these kids out of the Juvenile Authority. Questions? I do need volunteers. You can't be an attorney, you can't be in law enforcement. But other than that, I'll leave my card. Jenny knows where I'm at, she can call me. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next we have a presentation from the YWCA.
Hi, good evening. I'm Stacy Woodland with YWCA Tri-County Area. YWCA. So I just want to say that for everybody. So thank you so much for having me here tonight. I really wanted to talk about the fact that we, the YW, received a donation of buildings next to our building, 323 and 325 King Street, at the very end of the year, December 30th, I think, on 2015. Those buildings came with, because we accepted the donation, we didn't do the title searches and all of those things, and the property has tax liens and sewer bills dating prior to our acceptance of the donation. And I'm coming before the council to ask for relief of the 20, of anything that predates our acceptance of the donations. So, I mean, there isn't more, I mean, I'm happy to answer any questions about the YW or what we intend. I've talked with several members of the council. We don't have an exact plan for the buildings yet. Our goal, we've enlisted the help of a community design collaborative, a nonprofit that helps other nonprofits kind of with design plans for, to build community consensus. We're working really diligently to figure out how we can continue to expand our mission and services and continue to support the community with our services. And, you know, we've been in our location since 1913 with always good community relations and the best of intentions for the Tri-County Area.
What is your mission?
Our mission is to eliminate racism, empower women, and promote peace, justice, freedom, and dignity for all.
And how does that tie into the two properties? Because you really didn't say much about the intended use for the properties. I'm a little confused.
So it ties in that, the fact that we are very space constrained in our current building. We have expanded services to include early head start and an additional pre-K counts classroom. Our playground for our children is exceptionally small, and we are really just working to figure out what other programming we can add and how that additional space will support it.
You have a community development corporation as also part of your programming?
We do not.
Do not, okay.
Ms. Lawrence?
I just, have you communicated with the school district with your intentions on this? As far as, I mean, so there's tax liens on the property, and you're asking for, so I assume that there's school district taxes that are owed as well, correct?
I believe so.
So, I mean, are you planning on communicating with the school board about the same issue?
So yes, I can. If directed by, I had not done that. I have not done that. My understanding, when we took possession of the properties, the previous owners of the properties, Paul Prince, the one property, said to me that he was making things whole with the school district and the taxes owed to the school district. And then that has not happened.
I mean, my concern is, I, we've established a really positive relationship with the school board, so.
Yes.
We just want to keep everyone in a loop.
Okay, absolutely.
Do you have an estimated number of monetary, what you'd be looking?
So before, the liens before we took possession of them, I believe it's, actually, I don't. I don't know the exact number, because we've gotten several different numbers and information from the borough that I haven't been able to verify exactly what is the exact number.
Would there be a consideration of the possibility of working with a nonprofit and possibly getting those properties rehabbed and back on the tax rolls?
So, absolutely. I mean, we really are a community-focused organization and willing to collaborate and work with anybody. Like, our goal is to have community improvement and however we can work together, absolutely.
Okay, great, thank you.
Did Mr. Prince also say, take care of the borough taxes and the county taxes and all the other liens?
So he promised me that all liens for that, the property of the part that he owned, because there's two.
All liens.
For his side, yes, yes.
Mr. Wayne, I have a little bit of information to add. I'm not sure I have exact numbers, but I do know that Mr. Prince did own 323 King Street, and there had been discussion about making the borough whole with respect to the borough taxes, as well as resolving or attempt to resolve a tax assessment appeal that had been pending for some time. My understanding further is that the makeup of those charges would be water and sewer fees, borough taxes, county taxes, and school taxes. I understand that the lion's share of those taxes were probably against 325 King Street, which again, I don't know that that was Mr. Prince's property per se, but I believe that was the property that had most of the liens against it. And I think for council to make an educated decision, you'd have to be provided with all the specific information with respect to what's owed and to what entity or taxing authority.
Right, and we'll see to it that council has that information.
So at this time, we have heard your request.
Yep.
And we'll have our staff and solicitor look into it.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Janice, you'll take care of getting the data. Thank you.
Okay, number 10 is presentation from three human relations commissions. I guess we're going to start with A, the Pottstown Human Relation Commission.
Good evening. I'm Diana Rivero Bryant. I'm the consultant and administrator for the Pottstown Human Relations Commission. I'm going to delay my comments until after the other commissions have had an opportunity to talk to you. With that being said, I'd like to introduce to you Mr. Carl Somerson, and also the vice chair, Ms. Raquel Yanks.
Good evening, everyone. How are you? We're with the State Human Relations Commission, I guess you probably know that, and I also want to say, this is the vice chair, Raquel Yanks, Dr. Raquel Yanks from Reading. We're not PMA, we're not bringing the money. I know in January you had some damage down here, but let me tell you, we're going to talk about another type of damage, and that's what discrimination can do to a community and members in that community. Our commission came to understand what the Pottstown borough had previously, I guess in 2009, had amended your ordinance that was created, we were very pleased to see in 1967, which was very progressive for a local community to do that. You may be aware that here in Pennsylvania, there are many communities that have developed local commissions in the last several years. They've done that because the legislature in the state level has not stepped up and protected some groups that believe they should too be protected from the evils of discrimination. There's a lot of categories that are available in some of these ordinances that the state Pennsylvania Human Relations Act does not protect, and that's a real good reason why to have a local commission, number one, to have these additional protections for people. But as well, we find, we deal with about 35 or so local commissions, and we've been trying to engage these local commissions in having memorandums of understanding with them, working in coordination with them. Around the state, there's a variety of authorities that are given to these local commissions, and frankly, the authority to do that comes straight out of the Pennsylvania Human Relations Act. You may know that. Section 12.1 gives borough councils and other councils such as yourself the authority to do that, create these commissions, and to give them powers and duties that are similar to what we have up to that point. In range of authority that's been given, I got to tell you, Pottstown has given their commission the least authority of any other commission in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. The authority that your Pottstown commission has is basically to go into the community, uproot, understand, address, bring to people's attention evils that are out there with regard to discrimination, and refer people to the Pennsylvania Human Relation Commission. Our executive director, Joanne Edwards, had directed correspondence both to the board, to the council, and also to the mayor late last month, after we came to the understanding that there was some movement maybe afoot to think about putting the duties that the commission has somewhere else. One of the ideas was to put it to the Montgomery County Advisory Council. The advisory council is one of our councils. We create that as well. And they're not there to hear cases or to accept cases. They're to do almost what this council, or a council in 2009, has given your local commission, only to kind of find out in the community what's going on and tell us. There are our eyes and ears in the community, in effect. So they don't, it's not something you could pass the duty to hear a case to the Montgomery County Advisory Council. That wouldn't happen. It would have to come either to a local commission, to the state commission, or to EEOC, or those civil rights organizations. We at the state commission, in dealing with a lot of the local commissions, understand a couple of things. One is, people are short of funds, and that's a big issue. And we also recognize that many of those communities that are short of funds develop these commissions because they're volunteers. In effect, that's what they are. You don't pay them. By our statute, you can't pay them, only for maybe expenses they incur if they're doing a case or something. But those commissions range from those that only help mediate a case that's filed with them, others do an entire investigation and hold hearings and award remedies should they find liability in a case. We know that these commissions that only have commissioners, such as your own, they don't have staff, there's not a director like the state, you don't have lawyers for the commission like the state does. We have these memorandums that ask them to send those people that have cases that are similar to our jurisdiction in a local, send them to the state, because they're not prepared to do those cases. They're prepared, however, to step up to do those instances where a local borough or council affords to a local commission protections that the state doesn't afford. Just for instance, people that are sent to a, as they're looking for a job, they're sent, and they get a screening, and that screening includes what their genetics say. And the genetics may tell them, five, 10 years from now, that person might develop cancer, and therefore, they don't hire that person. The genetic information is used to, in effect, discriminate. That's a protected category that many people have put into their ordinances. The state hasn't yet. There's others. Familial status, in employment, in public accommodations, your idea of marital status, veteran status, source of income, are issues that we don't have. Another big one that has caused a lot of new human relations commission is sexual orientation, gender identity, and gender expression. Also, regarded as any of the protected categories that we have. We don't have those protections. Local commissions do. As from the state level, we encourage this council to consider not setting aside your local commission, but instead to give it enforcement powers. Giving them these powers, increasing the number of those volunteers, so that you can separate the functions that a commissioner will perform. One commissioner can't, for instance, investigate a case and then later hear it. There's a total due process issue there. But we encourage this borough council here to please consider increasing the powers that the current, is currently in your ordinance. Look at some of the other ordinances around the state. We can give you some insight as what we believe to be some of the good ones, and consider that as building your commission, fighting discrimination locally. We think it's important that local people are involved in local issues. They can get to the heart of things better than the state coming down from Harrisburg or up from Philadelphia somewhere. So, I've said a lot, I've scratched the surface on these issues with you. I stand ready to answer any questions anyone has. I happen to, by the way, I'm the hearing examiner. I'm the judge for the commission. I don't, you know, I don't investigate cases or anything, but I was asked to come tonight, and I'm happy to, I'm happy to be here with you and to answer any questions anyone might have.
So I need to understand something. We're talking about investigating and hearing cases, so there are costs associated with that, correct? I mean, you're, an average citizen cannot investigate and hear a case without some kind of legal advice, correct?
They're doing it around the Commonwealth, they are. The commissioners that are appointed to these local commissions, and all they have are commissioners, they'll take maybe three of them out of nine, say, you guys investigate this and don't tell us what you find. Because once you tell us, now you've tainted us. We can't be pure from hearing that later. In fact, Reading was the city that that happened. In fact, Redding was the city that that happened in, and the courts have said, "You violated due process by doing something like that." I want to also say that most commissions don't have offices. They don't have a building or staff. What they have is like, the gentleman that was here earlier talked about, they use the room next door. That's what people do. They meet in the facility, that's government facility, maybe once a month or whatever, to deal with the issues that that local commission may find coming their way. But there is a cost, should a commission take a case to a hearing. First of all, who's going to present it? I guess this is, the solicitor may be over here somewhere. Okay. Borough Solicitor. Some do that. Some have your solicitor present it. If a cause is found after an investigation ensues.
And then who would pay the solicitor?
Well, the city does. Or wherever that solicitor is from. That's part, that becomes part of their duty. And that's pretty consistent, how local commissions operate around the Commonwealth.
Okay.
You're giving a lot of responsibility to commissioners, so is there criteria, certifications, qualifications, that these individual commissioners are required to have in order to have this type of authority?
There is not a set standard for that at all. Some people make a pastor. One thing that we do ask borough councils or city councils, whoever it is, to have diversity there, in the appointment of council members, commission members. But there's not a set standard of who can and who can't function as a commissioner. There's not that.
You said that a lot of the municipalities have these, and I was looking on the Pennsylvania website, and there's actually very few. So how many municipalities in Montgomery County presently have a human relations commission?
I can't tell you the exact number. Again, I'm the hearing examiner, but there are others in the county. When you say looked on the website, I don't know what website you're looking at.
The Pennsylvania Human Relations Commission, the actual Pennsylvania Human Relations Commission.
How many other local commissions there are?
Yeah, so...
There's well over 30.
I found Allentown, Harrisburg, Lancaster, Philadelphia, Pittsburgh, Redding, and York, with all considerably a larger population than the borough of Pottstown.
They do.
So, a question too is, how many cases are you being, because you're the judge, so you would know this, how many cases are being referred to you out of the borough of Pottstown?
Again, I can't tell you that. Our compliance people that investigate the cases, I couldn't, I could get that information for you, I don't have it. Maybe they, someone from their local commission can tell you that better than I can. Again, I'm the adjudicatory, I have, there's a wall between myself and almost everyone else in our commission, because I'm their judge. But, so the answer to your question, I wish I had the exact number, but I don't.
And the local commissions are appointed by the mayor? The commissioners?
No. Legislative bodies. Section 12.1 of the Pennsylvania Human Relations Act gives legislative bodies the power and authority to appoint a commission.
And then you said the county oversees what they're doing. There is, is there an appeal process for somebody that, you know, is found, a finding...
Found liable, and then they...
Right. Is there an appeal process?
Yeah, they can take it to court if they don't like what has transpired. There's an appeal process. Our appeals go to the Commonwealth Court. The appeals from most local commissions go to the common police court.
And then that would be at a cost of the, excuse me, a cost of the person that was filing that appeal?
Yes. That's correct.
And do those municipalities that do have a human relations commission, do they also have the enforcement authority and investigative authority and...
Again, many of them do.
Many.
When I say this, we've recently done a study of what they actually do have. And of the 35 or so, at least 20 of them have that authority. Maybe 25. It may be, I can get you the exact number, they're on my desk.
Yeah, we'll probably be asking for that.
Because we're seeking to have agreements.
But, and those that do have authority, how many of those in municipalities with less than 30,000 citizens?
I can't give you that number. But I will say this, the larger cities, the vice president over there had mentioned, they have staff. They have, like York, has an executive director and a staff person. That's who they have.
Okay.
Two people that work, because they're larger. Philadelphia has a staff of maybe 40 or 50 people. Pittsburgh has a larger staff. Communities such as your own don't have staff. They instead give the power to commissioners. And then the commissioners do that work.
Okay.
Okay? And then what we ask them to do, for the protection of the rights of an individual that lives in a community, if it's under the Pennsylvania Human Relations Commission and under the act, and someone files a complaint that comes under our act and under your ordinance, send that person to the state. Why don't you take care of the ones, like the genetic information cases, like the sexual orientation, should you choose to give that as a protected category? See what I'm saying?
Okay.
And what we often do is, we send back to the local commission, the opportunity, after someone has filed a case with us, that comes out of Pottstown, we give the opportunity to someone in the local commission to try to mediate that case. Because they know the local people. They can deal with people better than we can come in there and try to do that.
But the funding for all expenses would come out of Pottstown?
Yes. Yes.
Okay. And then, I missed something in there, because there's a county level, and where do they come to apply?
The county, what the county is, is an advisory council to the Pennsylvania Human Relations Commission. They're empowered to go out in the community, root out what's happening, understand what the roots of discrimination in their area are, tell us about it, refer people to us, give educational programs that tell people what the Pennsylvania Human Relation Commission does, what the act protects, giving information. But they don't hear cases. Someone can't file a case with the Montgomery County Advisory Council. They're a good council, they're probably, well, one of the best, if not the best, council in the state.
Forgive me, I have a strange question, because I really never saw on a job application where it asks for genetic information or sexual orientation, so I'm curious how you would come about a case such as that.
Again, very simple. This is on the horizon. Employers, before they hire somebody, before they afford them a chance to come on, can give them a physical. Part of that physical sometimes has been to look at genetic makeup. The genetic makeup of someone is then used, if that report comes back, this person may develop diabetes. Their genetic makeup tells us this is a possibility. So the employer says, "Don't hire them, that's going to cost us money." That, we believe, is discriminatory. And as a result, some people protect that, some areas protect it. That's on the horizon, in the civil rights area. Okay?
So from a top-down perspective, the federal government should protect from allowing employers to discriminate in that way, so it doesn't have to be the ground troops volunteering to fight a war that should never start.
I couldn't agree with you more, Mayor.
Right.
I think that we encourage the state to consider legislative changes to the Pennsylvania Human Relations Act every year.
But it doesn't...
Doesn't happen.
It's inside out and backwards.
Well, I couldn't agree with you more.
So municipalities such as Boyertown, I don't think they have a human relations commission?
I don't believe they do.
If there's an issue there, the individuals would not call the county?
No. Well, they can call, but the county will be there to assist them to come to us.
Okay. But they couldn't call the county?
That's all they can, refer them. That's all they can really do.
All right. So the county really doesn't help the individual that much, it's just...
Only to be a support, let that individual understand what they're doing. People don't know. They don't know the rights, first of all. So that...
In a lot of issues. You're right.
Yeah. That's what our advisory councils are there, oftentimes. There are members in the community that are active, understand the issues in their community, and bring those issues to us, or individuals to us, when they have what they believe to be a discriminatory practice.
Okay.
So if you have a local human relations commission, and say there was a local human relations commission in the borough of Pottstown, in the, under the scope that you're speaking up, if somebody in the borough of Pottstown applied for a job out in West Pottsgrove Township, would the borough of Pottstown commission be able to handle that? And...
If it's in the jurisdictional area, when you spoke about that area, I'm not entirely familiar with the geography.
If it's outside of the borough, anything out of the borough?
Outside of Pottstown, no.
Okay, so reverse that. If somebody from outside of the borough is employed at an agency within the borough, and they have an issue, that still couldn't be heard within that borough's...
Yes, it would. Where the action occurs is where the jurisdiction lies.
Where the action occurs.
I believe it was last month, I think I spoke with you after a meeting about this a little bit. Actually expressed to the president last, the last time they spoke, that I was actually in support of the human relations commission.
Good.
And, you know, they talked about having a desk, an office, or, you know, somewhere to operate, you know, within the building. I don't see a major issue with that. I actually expressed my support with that last month, I believe it was. There was the issue with doing investigations, and things like that, as people are saying, you know, where does liability fall, where their limitations might be, as far as their limitations during investigations. I think there has to be some more, you know, just work to be done as far as putting together some type of a plan, you know, as to how to approach this. But I am in support of some type of support.
Could I?
I don't think we should be quick to just push this aside and say, you know, "We don't need this." I don't think we should do that. I think we should at least hear them out, see how can we help them, whether this is a little office, or a little desk, or just use the room over there, like you said. I feel that it's important, I feel the work is needed in the community. And, you know, if they do some kind of investigations, maybe it's a situation where they just do the investigation and they report their findings to the solicitor, or to the police, or something like that. I'm not sure how that works. But, you know, my overall consensus at this point is that we should support somehow, and we need to look into it further to see how can we support them, and not just arbitrarily brush them aside and say, "Ah, no, we don't need that."
We certainly encourage local support, but I want to tell you, from the state level, we too want to support local commissions, both in training, in assistance, in terms of when they have questions. I've actually personally sat with commission panels that have heard cases in towns, in local commissions, when they had no one. Our executive director said, "Carl, help that commission." And I sat with them and helped them write their opinion after a case was over. And I'm, I want to fight discrimination. That's the key. That's the bottom line. And it's a good thing to do that.
It's not a black and white, it's not a black and white issue.
No.
It's everybody.
Yeah.
So...
But I certainly understand your words. The ideal thing is everyone had enough money to make a good staff, and we know you don't.
No, we don't.
But there's alternatives, is what I'm saying. To still having a valid, workable commission that helps your local residents, but you don't have to spend a lot of money to do it. That's the bottom line.
I'd be very concerned that a small borough like Pottstown would have this commission of enforcement powers, and every other municipality surrounding us would have nothing in place for protections.
They do have something in place, the State Pennsylvania Human Relations Act. So they have that.
And we have that as well.
They could, but look at, you're one of the learned councils, or at least cities, that since 1968 understood there's an issue. Other municipalities and counties even, haven't done that. I'm, and I know when I spoke with the chair, I praised Pottstown for having had the foresight in 1968. That's really remarkable.
But in 2009, the only change that was made was the number was reduced to five. There was no change in the capacity, it was the same. So it was already written to be ineffective. The language was there since 1967.
When we have a chart of the effectiveness that you give and the power, Pottstown is holding the last rung of the ladder. You've given the local ordinance through that, you've given your commission really little.
But it's been that way.
It's been that way for a long time.
And this is my second time being the mayor, so we, in the first inherited state of the commission, there was a staff person that was paid. And I believe that there's very limited data that we have access to, if I'm correct. Is that correct?
You should be getting a yearly report according to your ordinance, things like that.
No.
Well, I'm just saying, what's there? What's in your ordinance?
But I'm just saying, what happens on the ground. And also, many of the occurrences that are, they're mostly litigious instances where educational awareness is not the caveat. It's really, there needs to be some kind of a real hard hammer that comes to that issue to really make it plain that this is unlawful.
We were just talking about one of the awards I gave recently of over $600,000. That's a pretty heavy hammer to a company that discriminates.
Right. And we would call you and refer them, so that you could fight that.
If it's a case that we would do, but it may not be one, if you have protections beyond our scope.
Why would the protections at the state level be less than the local? I just, it seems inverted. And then you're putting the ground troops with heavy-duty work.
I would ask you to ask your legislator the question.
I will.
I can't give you the answer to that. I wish I could. We have encouraged there to be increased protections afforded to residents, but that hasn't happened.
I think we should, I think we should look for reasons and ask questions how we can help, as opposed to looking for reasons not to help.
I will tell you, the state commission is prepared to come back and share other, maybe a session with the council, with your commission, to show you how these things work.
Many years ago, we were working together with the community and the police department, and everything was fine. The last six years, they were kind of a little tough, because they downsized us, and like you say, you cannot take a case when you have only five people. And everybody working full-time, they had extra jobs. And we tried to do the best we can, and we are in the community. We hear cases, and we solve problems. But then, and now, we need the power in order to do better, and we need training, because I talked with the police, 16 years, 13 years ago, we had the last training that we had for mediation. Everybody need to be trained all the time in order to be better.
I want to say one other thing, what you mentioned, we at the state also recognize proactive issues. To go out in the community and advise people what they're doing might be wrong, and it may stop it. And it saves a company from going through this, getting that $600,000 award against them. That's also what local people can do much better than the state people can come down in your community and try to tell someone how to run their business.
I will tell you, I think any employer that would be operating in the borough of Pottstown would be scared to hire anybody at this point, thinking that a local commission could hit them with a $600,000 damage award.
That's unusual, but let's face it, their back pay, if you don't get a job, you'll lose your back pay that you would have paid that person, and maybe front pay if you don't put them on. That was an unusual one, and it was, anyway.
Will you be able to...
We're not afraid to award a judgment against somebody, but I'm just telling you one that just recently happened.
This may be a little bit of a stretch, but I almost see this as, you know, as a similar or akin to, you know, the youth aid panel, you know, that we just heard about. It could be a situation where, you know, the complaints come to the human relations commission, and they're able to solve the thing, and get the people together, and come to a resolution before it gets to court, and save the taxpayers money. You know, it's just, I just see this positive, so...
Let me tell you, the general statistics from the state level, over 50% of the cases that are filed are no cause, after investigation. 35 to 36% are settled. Come to agreement, save all that. Others administrative, they're closed, and the few that trickle down from the end come, and we hear them. And unfortunately, someone's going to win, someone's going to lose. That's, we'd rather they get together and make agreement, both win a little something. And local folks can do that much better than we can.
And also, we have an, one of the commissioners, certified investigator?
Yeah. Yeah, I'm certified. And if I can say this, I, this gentleman, I had a case against a company in Allentown called Integrity Stabbing Solutions. I went there for a job. I came in, and what happened is, they seen my record, which was 30 years ago. They pulled me to the side. I explained to them that I have a home air security clearance in the past, worked for the city of Redding, I got city clearances, and they said, "Go ahead, Mr. Dunn, fill the application out." So, I filled the application out, and they had me take some tests... So I filled the application out, and they had me take some tests, which was no problem to me, and I passed the test. They said, Mr. Dunn, come in on Wednesday, start the shift. Came in on Wednesday, and, um, they won't let me in. They gave me a phone number to call that Monday. So I called that, so I said, well, what's going on? The guy said something to my record. I'm like, hey, man, that's, that's 30 years ago. That's 30 years ago. So what happened is I called the company in Delaware, spoke to this person here, said I want to speak to your boss, called that person, said I want to speak to your boss. Third person I spoke to, um, was a female. She says, um, Mr. Dunn will never, ever hire you because of your record. I said, miss, that's, I have a home insurance security clearance. I had that for 23 years. I said, I had DOD clearance for 22 years. She said, we'll never hire you. So I went and got an attorney, and I filed a lawsuit against them. Made a settlement that quick. It was very quick. I've never seen a settlement that quick. And in addition to what you said about the cases, I've done about 86 cases in the city of Reading. Most of them were no problem calls, like you said. And maybe possible there might have been one or two out of 80 that there was some discrimination that occurred. What it does, it just keeps everybody in line. It makes you walk that straight line. That's what it does. It's not about big awards. If it's a big award for $600,000, it had to be a huge company.
That's unusual.
It had to be a huge company, you know? That's based on a number of employees, so don't get it confused. Then there was Pepsi-Cola. Well, they were doing it in Washington DC, they heard about my case, and my California called me up. Lawyer from California called me, another one from New Jersey called me, they, they all did Pennsylvania. So what happened is when I went on my case, down in Washington DC, Pepsi-Cola, they were doing the same thing to the employee, to the employees down there. It was 300 black employees, and they were awarded $300,000. And that's why you need a commission. You need somebody that, that can go in and, and fight for people's rights, you know?
For an equal opportunity.
I, I've now been enlightened, uh, to the point, I, I understand that the reason for all of this, the need, is because the state, uh, protection from the state's not adequate. State legislature hasn't done their job, and so they're pushing all the responsibility down and down. Also understand now that the county really doesn't help anybody at this level, they're just simply, so that doesn't appear to be needed. And now the state would like us to fund, um, performances at this level that they don't want to pay for.
Well, I, I, what I, what I said again.
My words, not yours.
Yeah. These folks are volunteers. A cost would come in should a case come up. That's where the cost is, to make a transcript of that, maybe to have someone present the case if the solicitor's not selected for that. But it's not insurmountable for most of the other commissions, local commissions around the Commonwealth.
Okay. There are no other questions up here? I, I kind of liked Joe's suggestion that we look into this further, but go ahead.
I was just wondering, um, so say, like, the outlying communities, if there's a problem, can they go to the county?
No, once again, there's not a county commission. What, what there is in the county is an advisory council. The person in the outlying, that's outside of geographical protection of the Pottstown ordinance, has to come to the state or to the federal government.
So, so the outlying, say like West Pottsville or whatever, they would have to go to, right to the state? They, they wouldn't have anybody else they could go to in between?
If they would come to the local commission, they would probably be advised, we don't have jurisdiction over that, our jurisdiction's limited to Pottstown, we must go to the state with that. Okay?
So you're not going to provide funding to assist in bringing the count, uh, any commissioners up to speed in their credentialing for mediation?
Once again, I, as I mentioned, there's not really a credentialing. There's no standard that has ever been established. Training, we, we offer the training to those new commissioners.
At a cost.
At no cost. Yeah, there's no cost for that.
And is this a pass fail, or?
What?
Can anybody that fogs a mirror pass, or, I mean, is there?
There's no pass fail. We bring them in, assist in the training, and then if there's a issue, the local commission has to resolve that. They can throw someone off that's not, they don't want on there.
Anything else from council? Otherwise, I'd, I'd like to follow, Mr. Kirkland's lady said we should certainly study this and look into it.
I thank the Borough Council, Mayor, thank you so much, and, uh, I send greetings again from the State Commission.
Okay. Thank you.
And you'll follow up with the, the information that I requested, the number of cases referred from Pottstown?
Do that.
Okay, thank you.
Yes. I'll send that if, if it's okay to the Borough Manager.
Sure.
All right. Will do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I understand, uh, Montgomery County Commission is not speaking or not represented. Anything more from the local commission?
I just wanted to reiterate, to reiterate that, um, I worked for Reading Commission for 10 years as executive director and administrator. And, um, I am credentialed and I'm a, I've, I've traveled extensively to different law schools in, uh, around the nation and, uh, learned a lot about, uh, employment discrimination, housing discrimination, um, you know, discrimination for people who have disabilities and elderly, the elderly population and under the, the statue of, of family status. So, you know, you have, um, a wealth of information, uh, and people that have a lot of experience in dealing with human relations issues. I would just like to see, um, that you would really take to heart, um, the things that are happening in the community and the fact that the people have no voice. I think that the commission could be a very, uh, strong force to be reckoned with, and I think that, um, being able to provide outreach and education in the community would also help to build bridges and alliances. So I again ask you, um, to please take that into consideration. Thank you.
I got a couple questions.
I, I'm sorry. I have one comment question. I've, I've been on council since January. I've heard, heard your request. I still have not seen any kind of data at all. And, and I need to see facts. I, I get, I hear what you're saying, I totally respect it, I appreciate it, but I need some information. How many people are trying to access the commission and, and can't get in? Things like that in writing that, that I have something to go off of. That's, that's where I'm at.
Well, we've sent quite a few, um, reports, but the fact that, uh, the commission has not had, we've sent, I, I've sent reports, um...
To whom?
I've sent it to the Borough Council members.
We have a quarterly report ready to send tomorrow, and we have, um, minute ready to send them tomorrow. I wasn't able to send it today because I wanted to see what happened.
But you said you sent them.
Yes, we did.
You sent it to me?
I mean, I sent it to, to Rita. But one of the things is that, uh, I don't know how, um, the borough would expect that we would have statistics and things like that when we haven't had a, a functional office. There's no functional office, there's no telephone, you know, like people, they had a building over there, and, um, people weren't ever, uh, able to access using the, uh, calling to leave, um, information about their complaint, nothing. So, you know, we, we have not had a viable office or even, um, even somewhat functional that people could come.
We just talked about office space, and, and just like the youth aid panel, and just like the state is, is saying that to keep costs down, that, that they use the borough facilities, which we have opened up to the commission, and the commission has just decided that they don't want to use borough facilities, even though it's handicap accessible, it's professional offices, it's private, it is, is open and available to you. So I'm confused at what you're saying, that you haven't had an office up and running to be able to hear cases.
No, um, I started with the commission in October, and I'd been faithfully, um, requesting that they could either give us a space here or somewhere that, um, would, we would be able to keep secure files. And because the information that comes in, when people come in to file a complaint and you, um, do an intake, we, we can't just let them, um, files and that paperwork everywhere. We have to have somewhere that's secure. So if they're offering a room here that, you know, we can keep files and, um, keep a log and statistics, uh, of people coming and going, um, that would be wonderful.
And, and I will say this to the youth aid panel, I did serve on the youth aid panel myself for several years, and you are given, and I, and I was chair of the Pottstown area, and you are given confidential police records and files to, to keep until that case is, there's a resolution to that. Now, they have no enforcement powers at all. It is the police enforcement, and they just make a resolution, and if that, if that child passes through that, then, then they're cleared, if not, it gets referred back to the police department. However, once you're holding on to those as a, as a personal person, so a filing cabinet at home that you hold on, that I'm, that I have that until the case is cleared, and then it goes right into the shredder. So that's not something that you, that you keep, you maintain, that's private confidential information. There's no office granted to the youth aid panel. They, they work out of Borough Hall, which they meet twice a month, out of this room over here.
Can I ask what the opposition to, um, having a, a local commission is?
I'm, I'm just, I'm looking at the cost. So, so you, we had offered Borough Hall as, as an option, and the state just said the same thing, that they, that they offer out of local offices, and the youth aid panel offers, offers out of a local office. And, and one of the things that you came to us with right away was the cost that, the amount that you're getting now, which is $6,700 a month, I believe, that that wasn't enough for you, a year, that wasn't enough to, to operate. So, so we are looking at, oh, sorry, some additional costs. That, it, it seems that you, you're not looking at trying to keep down, but rather increase.
Well, I, I think that, um, it's extremely important for people to have their civil rights, um, and for people to know that, uh, there is help available for them should they feel discriminated against. You know, I understand that, um, the borough is looking at all these costs, and they think it's going to be an enormous cost, which I don't think it is. I think that once, uh, and I, I stated this prior, I believe that once, um, we can get up and running, we have a memorandum of understanding with the state, but we could also get one with HUD and also with the EEOC. And, and that would cover, that would cover the case. Though, that would cover, um, the cost because you would get paid a certain amount of money for each case.
Those fundings are never guaranteed, that I do know. I, I do have also concerns about, you know, investigations and, and that sort of thing, and, and the kind of powers that you're asking for. I do have personal concerns with that. And then, then also, I just want to ask this question, do you feel that anybody outside of the borough of Pottstown doesn't have, that, that they don't, that they don't have any issues that they would need to, because you're, because this is just strictly the borough of Pottstown that you're addressing, so do you think anybody in the surrounding townships doesn't?
Oh, I'm sure they do. There are many issues.
I don't think it's a fair question. I mean, come on, I mean, it's, 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 to me, it seemed like the questions from council are hostile to me.
They are.
To me. And, and I don't, I don't think it has to be. I mean, I, I mean, uh, we don't, this doesn't have to be a hostile situation. Let me say it's somewhat hostile. Okay? I, I think they're trying to do a good thing. I mean, don't, do we not have, have disabled people in Pottstown who are discriminated against? Do we not have elderly people who are discriminated against every day? I mean, we need a place for them to go, a place, place for them to, 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 um, uh, you know, give out grievances to. I mean, I, I don't think it, like I said, we do need to sit down and go over logistics and see how we can get this thing done. But I don't, I don't think the questions have to be hostile. I really don't. I mean, you guys are looking for reasons not to do this, as opposed to reasons to do it.
I, I'm just looking for, for facts, Councilor Kirkland, which I, which I really don't have. I, I don't have how many people, how many elderly people have been discriminated against.
Let's, let's get together and, and, and figure out a, a, a plan. We don't need hostile questions. Oh, people outside the borough, you know, don't you think they have issues too? I mean, that's, that's not fair to them.
Okay, well, we, we, but we did have this commission since 1967, and we haven't had, now you're saying, let's get together on a plan, but where have the, the statistics been for the last, how many years? Where have they been for the la, the past year?
Okay, let's, let's start now, okay?
I have it for the past, I have it for this year, not for last year. I just, I have them all. I'll, I'll show them to you.
Okay.
I know I've dealt with almost, at least, well, I'm gonna say at least eight people.
I mean, if we could have started this year, we start fresh and new and give it a chance. That's it. No, that's it had to be hostile.
I've been through a lot of time on this, you know, you know, you know, let's just agree to, maybe, maybe, let's, let's do a little more to see how we're, we can go.
Can we move forward by agreeing to get together and research?
Right.
Is that agreeable?
Can we make a statement as well to the communities of hiring, employment, education, healthcare, et cetera, that when you're doing the right thing for the right reason, there shouldn't be a problem? When you're just doing the right thing for the right reason, there shouldn't be a problem. But just so you know, the climate of non-business attraction has its roots in union grievances, EEOC claims, and petty lawsuits. That's the history. So if we're starting somewhere, we're starting with the mindset that that costs money when there's issue upon issue upon issue that comes to these places as statistics, and then businesses don't want to come. That's something we have to consider in the moving forward. Of course, everyone is due their civil rights, but we know that the nature of discrimination and racism is very systemic and very pervasive, and it has a way to, uh, make itself as a chameleon just under the wire, that is just uncomfortable, but you can't prove it. This is where the problem lies. That's the corrective action mindset.
I don't believe it's in every instance, and I think that, um, maybe there's been so many stereotypical perceptions about, um, you know, everything is fine and dandy, there's no discrimination.
There is.
There's no racism.
There is.
But, you know, like, maybe none of you have, um, felt the sting of racism, but I have.
So have I.
And I can tell you many, many, many thousands of people that have been through issues and concerns. And so, you know, we, we have to really take our personal opinions and our personal thoughts about what, what constitutes racism or discrimination. I don't think it's, you're not giving the people here in Pottstown a fair shake. You are not. If you are denying them an opportunity to have their voices heard, you, you are not doing them justice. You're not doing them justice.
Mind you, that, that is not the case. In fact, there are many organizations serving the borough of Pottstown that people can take their voices to. So I am not at all opposed for, in fact, I am a, a personal advocate for many people that have, have difficulties, that feel like they are, um, you know, not necessarily discriminated against for racism, but maybe for housing, and I have been a personal advocate for people in the borough of Pottstown. So it is, I, I have nothing, I think people should be able to have their voices heard, and I am more than happy to help anybody that comes to me in any way to advocate for them. I have done it for people with disabilities, people with housing, people that are elderly, all types of various situations. So I am not at all opposed to having somebody have their voice heard and getting help.
Right. Is council in agreement to go forward?
The vice chair would like to have five minutes, is that okay? The vice chair from the State Commission?
Good evening, everybody. What I would like to say is that I would not like to think that my trip here tonight was in vain, unless I address an issue that I hear all the time. I have been a commissioner for 40 years with the Pennsylvania Human Relations Commission. And, uh, no matter where we go, the conversation always is about the workplace. But the Pennsylvania Human Relations Commission has two branches of discrimination, the workplace and equal educational opportunity. And very seldom do I, do I hear people talking about the discrimination that's going on in the schools in Pennsylvania. Our children are being constantly discriminated, especially with the changing demographics in the state of Pennsylvania, and all the children that are coming to us who are non-English speaking children, those children are not receiving an equal educational opportunity. And many times those children have nobody to advocate for them. And I'm telling you that right now, the Pennsylvania Human Relations Commission is really making a very strong effort to address the issue of discrimination in the schools of Pennsylvania. And we have at least five school districts. And we have at least five school districts that we are dealing with, some we have in court, because of the issue of discrimination in the equal educational opportunity of our children. So please, whatever you talk about, the Human Relations Commission, whether it's locally or state, do me a favor and do not forget the issue of equal educational opportunity. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I think it's fair to say council's willing to look into this?
Yeah.
Okay. Between council and staff and our solicitor, got some homework to do. Fair enough? Okay, number eleven is a presentation from the Cluster of Churches.
Good evening. My name is Ken McCarty. I'm a Pottstown lawyer, office right here in the East End. We have a short PowerPoint presentation for you. I have the pleasure of advocating tonight on behalf of the Pottstown Cluster of Religious Communities. You're probably aware that they have had for five years a presence on North Franklin Street at fifty-seven. In July of last year, they bought another building which is adjacent to that. The address there is sixty-one Franklin Street. And they would like to encompass, incorporate that new building into their current operation. In order to do so, to use the building as they would like, they need zoning relief. I have filed on their behalf a zoning application. The matter will go before zoning hearing board, I believe, now on May fourth. My objective this evening is to explain to you a little bit about what the cluster does, what the cluster proposes to do at its new location, some of the things the cluster does not do, and to hopefully dispel a few misconceptions. And at the conclusion, ask you to support the cluster in its effort to obtain zoning relief. The first slide is identifies the mission of the organization. Through interfaith cooperation, the cluster provides tangible services, support, and spiritual guidance to address basic needs of persons within and beyond the greater Pottstown area. They coordinate programs and referrals to help clients improve their overall stability. This evening, I have with me several board members from the organization. Seat at the table is Barbara Willemey. She's the executive director of the organization. And there are other members, I believe, who are in support this evening as well. The history of the cluster is that in nineteen sixty-seven, it was formed basically through the Bridges. Became incorporated in nineteen seventy-one. From eighty-eight to two thousand and eleven, operated at one thirty-seven Walnut Street. In January of two thousand and ten, acquired the property at fifty-seven North Franklin Street, and has been operating there ever since. I mentioned that in July, they bought sixty-one North Franklin Street. The programs. An overview is that they run at that site, a food pantry, closed closet, supportive and financial assistance, a chaplaincy, a program called the Getting Ahead Initiative, a program called Bridges Out of Poverty, another program called Housing Resource Center, the Wise Food Shopper Program, and Community Meals. The pantry is depicted in that photograph there. People, no more than twenty-eight people a day. Each person is only allowed to come once per month. They receive food for approximately a week, mostly dry goods. There is no food sort of on the spot. No prepared food, no cooked food, things like that. In two thousand and fifteen, towards the bottom there, you can see, I'm sorry, I'm only pointing at one spot at the table. It'll be tougher for Mr. Froxxel. But in two thousand and fifteen, served two thousand six hundred individuals. Thirty-eight percent of those are children. Those are children that live in the Borough of Pottstown, attend the schools. Their families are benefited. They themselves are benefited by having clothing, food, and so forth. Dry goods, provided clothing, again depicted in the picture. This is what the inside of the cluster building looks like. People organize out front, enter orderly, are served their food, and leave, many of them on foot. Not a lot of car traffic. Business operates regular business hours, eight-thirty to four-thirty. Does not create noise, no light pollution, no excessive police calls, really just quietly goes about its business. Might point out to you here, provides support to families to the Pottstown School District, particularly for those that can't afford uniforms. They may be able to obtain a uniform for the school at the cluster dry goods store. Next, financial assistance and support services. Some of those programs are listed there. Next is the chaplaincy, provides spiritual guidance. Have six chaplains representing different congregations. This is not a requirement. It's just something that's available. Next is the Getting Ahead Initiative. It's an educational program designed for persons living in poverty to investigate the effects of poverty, establish future plan. Currently, it's a sixteen-week workshop that is currently in this seventh week. And presently, they've had forty-four individuals who have graduated from this workshop series. These are forty-four people who live in the Borough of Pottstown. Next is the Bridges Out of Poverty Program. Again, an educational component, increasing community understanding of the effects of poverty, building partnerships, and provide program to schools, county collaborations, work centers, et cetera. They have a Housing Resource Center, again, the cluster presently, and the new property next door does not house people. They don't put people up in temporary overnight shelters or anything of the sort. It's more of an educational and collaborative effort to get people help that they need, you know, who are struggling either with homelessness or poverty. Positive outcomes listed on the bottom here, increase in income, connection services, and discharges to more permanent housing. The Wise Food Shopper Program, again, educational component, teaches about nutrition labeling. He serves in the Health and Wellness Foundation. I know the Health and Wellness Foundation is a big supporter of the cluster and the pantry. Community meals, I think the last in this series, is, feeds a lot of folks, but it's not done on premises. This is essentially a volunteer effort, listed here on the slide. Five different locations, all off-site. I, I know that several, if not all of them are churches, run by thirty different volunteer groups, and fed in excess of twelve thousand individual meals last year. About the business. Business employs nineteen people, has over three hundred volunteers committed to their work, thirty-three local congregations. It's hard to go anyplace in the Borough of Pottstown to have any event that you don't hear that they sponsor or support the cluster. Serves a very important need to the community. And probably most important of these slides, and I think this goes to dispel a misconception, is that ninety-nine percent of the clients served in the pantry are report having a one nine four six four zip code. So these folks are not, you know, blessing in from Philadelphia. They are, for the vast, almost exclusive majority of these folks, local. And here's another, on this page, another very important statistic at the bottom. The, it says that over the past two years demonstrated a decrease in the number of households served across the borough. So in other words, by buying next door, shouldn't have the misconception that they are thriving in their business and they're serving more and more people. The numbers have essentially been flat. There's a different reason for wanting to use next door. So let's get to that. Why did they buy the building next door? First of all, look at that building. It is a magnificent building. I believe that it was built in nineteen, I'm sorry, eighteen eighty-seven. It's known as the Weinman Mansion. But it has essentially outlived its useful life. That is a single-family residence. It does not comport with current zoning. It had fallen into significant disrepair. And they bought it because it is simply right next door. Over time, they will have the wherewithal to fix it up. And it is suitable, very suitable, for office space. That's primarily what they intend to do. While we're on that picture, I think history is somewhat important too, and I can't go back to eighteen eighty-seven, but I believe around nineteen seventy-five, it was purchased by an outfit and run as a group home, known as Alternatives. It was that for twenty years. After that, for maybe a ten-year period, a church owned it, and I'm not exactly sure what transpired in there. Don't really know. But it was bought by an individual in two thousand and seven. He filed an application with the Borough to turn it back into a single-family or maybe a two-unit residence. But he was unable to, to make a go of that. He, in any event, Bank of America took the property back, I think in two thousand and ten, and it's been vacant ever since. It sits. It is deteriorating. It has missing shingles. It has a hole in the roof. Needs to be repointed. There are significant cracking in between all that beautiful stone. The other porch is falling. Heating system has had to be completely replaced. It needs some TLC, and if the cluster didn't buy it, it would appear it was going to remain that way for a long time because no one else made any effort to purchase the property. Here's another misconception that someone was going to buy and turn it into a B and B. Although that's partly true, there was an individual who expressed some interest in that. She and her husband quickly learned that there was no way that that property was ever going to be a B and B. The acquisition cost, the restoration and rehab costs would simply be prohibited. They would have been into it well in excess of a half a million dollars, and given the surrounding area on that section. I have talked with this individual. She's likely to testify at the zoning hearing. This property was not bought out from under her. There was, they had no desire to do that after expressing some initial interest. Next slide. What do they intend to use it for? Administrative offices principally, meeting space, offices for our work, and Pottstown has a resource center and educational programs. The cluster is not, and Barbara Willemey, at the end, you can welcome to ask questions, not anticipating hiring new people. They have just sort of overstuffed their present location with clothing and food and staff. They have people working in makeshift offices and things like that. So this will allow them to have, you know, a better use of the pantry space, and over next building, office space. So one might think the office would be a permitted use, and in some cases it is, and just hold that thought and come back to it. More specifically, on the specific floors, third floor administrative offices, second floor support service, staff offices, including the housing program. And on the first floor, that is, would be available for meeting space, board committee meetings, staff, volunteer, client, educational meeting space, things like that. Next. Probably no secret, they paid a little over a hundred thousand dollars for the building. Thus far, have spent twenty-seven thousand just fixing it up. I think that's primarily heating. The heating system was non-functioning, essentially replaced. Hole in the roof. You'll see some photos here in a second. They have substantial number of volunteers who dedicate serious time to the organization and this project, logging already over a hundred and thirty-two hours, clean up dressing items as a result of borough inspection. Next slide. The Borough of Pottstown, I know, like the school district, is concerned that this organization is a nonprofit. Property they acquire is generally exempt from taxes. I believe it was in October of last year, at least that's the letter I saw, the Borough of Pottstown communicated with, I don't know if it was most or all nonprofits, by way of a letter, asking for something referred to as a pilot pledge, that is simply an acronym for payment in lieu of taxes. And in very short order, the, this organization responded favorably, and has volunteers committed in writing, you'll see the paper here in a second, that they will pay as requested twenty-five percent of the tax bill they would have paid if they were not a non-exempt organization. Bullet point two, committed to supporting families in the community. Bullet point three, wannabe active partners in the community, including a program called Pottstown Cares. Next slide shows the building again on the left. Property is located in the first ward. Mr. Prostle was invited to come and get information from the cluster. I know that he did that. I know at least one other council member was invited as well. And this is an open invitation to anyone in council who wants to know more about, see in person. Just call the cluster, call me, make arrangements to come. There's nothing to hide there. They're very proud of what they do. We'd be glad to show you firsthand what it is that they do do. The, on the right side of the picture is captioned the Carriage House. It sits behind this building. It's in pretty good shape. It's actually quite a nice looking building. Most likely, the cluster would use that for additional office space as well. There have been some preliminary discussions with the Borough of Pottstown about outfitting its current location and/or either of both of these properties with cameras for police. I think that comes through some sort of community grant. And the cluster would, of course, be willing to do that if, if that's the wish of the borough. There may other, be other municipal uses, maybe some use, Borough of Pottstown would like to see that building used for, and we'd entertain those discussions too. I'm not really able to say quite what it is, I'm thinking, but there may be something that could actually benefit the Borough of Pottstown. The next photo is the rear of the property. This is, on this slide, you see, it's just to the right here where I'm pointing with the pointer, is the current cluster building. To the left is another, really quite a grand property. They're two, look to be probably built somewhere around the same time, and both rather grand when they were first constructed, I'm sure. The difference is, the one that we're talking about today is a single-family property. It is not cut up into apartments, and it would just, again, be very unlikely that someone would buy it for their residence, A, because of the cost and all of the rehab and upkeep associated with it. And to demonstrate that fact, I refer you to right next door. This property is owned by a gentleman, Vlad Robin Kestha, I think. Kestha, who I have spoken with. He is, and he owns that property and one directly across the street. And his properties are in fact cut up. That beautiful Victorian home just to the left, from the rear of our property, is six apartment units, and across the street, he owns two properties and collectively eight units. This is surrounded by anything but, you know, single-family residences. Inside the property, it looks quite magnificent. It really is. There's a long story, I think, about the woodwork, most of which I don't know, but from what I do know, I'm intrigued, and maybe someday the whole story will be told. Windows with different kind of glass there. Next slide. To the left, you have a room that has sort of rounded in shape, a wooden fireplace. To the right, photograph, again stained glass, a very unique and rather cool looking room there. But what you don't see in the pictures, you will see in the next couple of pictures. So the building has fantastic potential, and it would be a shame to let it deteriorate. This organization will be able to restore it over time, hopefully to its full grandeur. What you can't see in the earlier pictures, you do see in these pictures up close are substantial termite damage, you know, wood floors that are, you know, cracking and falling through. In the next picture, same kind of thing. The whole basement, you know, was really trashed, probably from water getting all the way from the third floor. The whole heating system has been replaced. You don't see it in these photos, but that, this is just evidence of some of the work that has been done since. On the third floor, it has large hole in the ceiling. There's also a hole in the roof, so, you know, water's coming through. And it's really a shame that it's sitting this way. It's hidden this way. No one else bought it. This is an opportunity to restore it and make a reasonable use of the property. You have the ceiling on the next floor, same thing. A lot of paint damage, water damage, and so forth. The next slide is the borough pledge that we signed. It's not something we've done recently. This was back in November of last year. We committed to pay the Borough of Pottstown twelve hundred and forty-one dollars a year because, A, you know, it seems, it's a reasonable request, seems like the right thing to do, and most importantly, we do benefit from the borough's services to some extent. We, when you plow the streets, that helps us. When you, should they ever need to call the police, they call the police. It's a little bit of a different story with the school district. I intend to make a presentation to them as well. I, I don't think we'll be as quick. First of all, the school taxes are substantially more, but we don't, there's no children that we- but we don't, there's no children that we have, we don't really benefit from the services provided by the school district. So just sharing that with you in case someone was wondering. The next photo depicts the tax information for this property, I don't know that, first of all, it's a little out of focus, I apologize for that, but it just shows the current assessed value, and that's how the tax for the pilot amount was calculated. The next page depicts a portion of your zoning ordinance. So this property is located in the traditional town neighborhood, the intent of which is to preserve and enhance historic neighborhoods that are predominantly residential, but also have a small number of stores and offices mixed in with houses. So there's a reference there to offices which are permitted, but under your permitted uses, number two there, you only list essentially dwellings, and again, in order to be an apartment, you need a minimum of $2,400 on the first floor, you can also have a single-family detached, and you can have a single-family semi-detached, this is the only permitted uses. There's no way this could ever be a semi-detached property, it is in fact already constructed, it takes up a large part of the lot, it is, it can't be a apartment either, so it could be a single-family detached, but I represent to you that it is functionally obsolete, there's not anyone that's going to put a half a million dollars roughly into that property to make it their residence. Maybe in 1887, not today. Here's another, two important points. Conditional uses are listed there, I know you had a conditional use hearing, you probably know that a conditional use is essentially an allowed use. So this could be a social club, think Yelps or something like that, that we weren't allowed to make, what we think is a reasonable use of the property could wind up with a social club there if we had to divest and sell it, that may be profitable for somebody. The next slide, skip to the bottom, number six, this is a special exception, a special exception is very similar to a conditional use, also essentially an allowed use, subject to reasonable conditions. So here again, that dwelling could be a boarding home or a group home, as it was for a long time. So if we don't get the zoning relief and can't use it as we proposed, you know, it's conceivable that someone could want to make a boarding house, which I have to think is something you would find less favorable than what's proposed. Under existing building conditional uses, you do have, for any existing dwelling, you can have an office, and it says except client-based social service provider. That's really what this case is about, because your zoning officer has determined that this proposed use is a client-based social service provider, which if you scroll to the next screen, I think is the definition of a client-based social service provider, which I don't, at least in my humble opinion, we are not. I've explained to you, we are essentially proposing administrative offices and the like, and this definition says, "A type of office consisting of a facility that provides onsite assistance to persons with limited ability for self-care." Term includes a facility that provides psychological, psychiatric, and our medical problems, employment, welfare, and other forms of assistance, essentially none of which we do. So I think it's a little bit of a difference of opinion on the proposed use, but that was a decision of your zoning officer, and that's why we're in before the zoning hearing here. The next slide, this is very hard to interpret, I'll quickly tell you, this is High Street here, and the tan area is all the TTN zoning district, and these gray properties in here, I guess are part of the downtown. So the property in question, this is the current cluster, next to it is here, we are in the TTN zoning, allowing things as I just described, but this type of proposed use is allowed in the FO, which is a flex office. So to me, it seems, again, a little silly that we can't have a social service provider office there, but we could walk one block to High Street and maybe a half a block to this alley, and then we're in an area where it would be an allowed use. So again, I couldn't begin to explain how the zoning ordinance works and things like that, but, you know, if you couldn't be where we want to be, could be across the street, still be tax exempt, wouldn't have any obligation to make a payment in lieu of tax, and I just think that what we propose to do makes more sense in the proposed location. The last slide lists what a variance is, there are five criteria that one must demonstrate to the zoning hearing board convincingly in order to be granted a variance. I won't bore you with the details, this will be for another day, but I do, I would say that there are unique physical circumstances to this property, principally its size. It is just too brand to be a single-family residence or any of the other allowed uses of the zoning ordinance. So we've come full circle now, I am back to the point where you know we're going before the zoning hearing board in about a month, we would like the Borough of Pottstown to issue a letter in support, there are a number of other service organizations, churches and the like, that anticipate having letters of support at the time of that hearing, there will be local politicians, Mr. Rafferty has submitted a letter in the past, we fully anticipate getting a letter, I don't have commitments from any of those folks, but I'm quite sure that, the Health and Wellness Foundation, likely, the Ryan Hostello, Mr. Rafferty, and such others as that, community leaders, Dick Franz is here this evening, he has already authored a letter of support, again, I won't bore you with that, but we will have substantial community support, and we're going to make the building what is, we believe, a reasonable use. I will gladly answer any questions that you might have now, and I apologize for having my back to you for a much longer time.
I have a couple, but can I just start with a couple of things, Mr. Picardi? I'm never really impressed when another governing body dictates the tax exemption status in the Borough of Pottstown because the state and the county, they're not affected the way we are when something comes off the tax rules. The house was owner-occupied, and the person that couldn't make a go of it couldn't make a go of it because he committed suicide, not because, you know, he fell into financial over here, so I just kind of want to bring that to your attention.
I think you're making my case for, carry on.
I don't want to even assume the reasons that he had done that, you know, if you want to assume that it was financial, I do not know, so I wouldn't even try to guess what was in the gentleman's wallet at the time.
That's why I didn't bring it up.
Okay, so you had said that you serve the 19464 ZIP code for most of your service for your clients. Is that because they came to the 19464 ZIP code for services, or were they already rooted here with family or previously living here?
I don't know if she can answer that question, but I'll turn to Barbara, who has the most experience, she's been with the organization for a long time.
So we don't do demographics to understand how long, well, the question that we do ask people is how long have they lived in the borough? They need to prove residency for us to receive services of three months, to be an active person in terms of getting services on a regular basis. Beyond that, I can't tell you, I can tell you though that five years ago, when we purchased the building that we're currently in, we mapped out where all of our clients were living and discovered that the clients that we were serving were all living in the community in which we currently exist, and many of those clients are still clients that we're serving, we do see new people. And we will serve people that don't live in the community, but we do not continually serve those people. If somebody comes to us, we're a food pantry, we have an abundance of, an opportunity to feed people, and so if somebody shows up on our door and they're hungry, we're going to give them food, I don't care where they live. If they live outside of this district, we will guide them to where they need to go, and we will be encouraging them to go to that district, they can't just keep coming back to us. On the Housing Resource Center side, we have, yes, housed people in Pottstown, but they are largely people who have family, who have jobs, who have connections to this community with services, and we're trying to make them whole in their lives.
Is there any kind of requirements for an individual or a family, because you said that you offer job training and educational programs and that type of thing, are there requirements for those people that are entering your programs to take those educational or job training programs that you're offering services for?
We have, we have one, I mean, so this year we instituted a program with our oil assistance that we required people to, on one of the slides you'll see that I wrote, that we had a pay it forward program. We required people to contribute either a monetary contribution to be able to pay it forward to another family, so they gave us a minimal monetary requirement or payment, or if they truly felt that they could not do that, we required them to participate in a three-hour, one of our workshops for UP3 program, each of those sessions are approximately three hours, and the particular session that we made them participate in was the one that dealt with income to debt ratio, budgeting, and opportunities for them to better understand how to manage their money.
Do we know what the success rate is that they have learned to better manage their money, and they are, or what the success rate is for anybody that is getting a job or a living wage job from your program, from the benefit of your programs?
So we are working, so the oil program was a new that pay it forward program, this is the first year that we did that, so no, I don't have data on, I can't give you long-range data on what's happening with those people. The UP3 program, or the Getting Ahead program that Mr. Picardi mentioned that we have 44 graduates from, we do have data from that group of individuals because we're trying to continually, after the program is done, the workshops are done, our intention is to continue to work with them as long as we are able to, and as long as they will engage with us to continue to help them to their road to stability. So we do have data of a number of them, and I'm sorry I don't have these statistics with me, but a number of them who are gainfully employed, we have a number of them who have actually moved on and moved out of the county to other opportunities, and we have a number of the clients that have participated in that program who are either volunteering in our office or volunteering in other community opportunities for them to, again, be kind of paying it forward and giving back as they're continuing on their road to stability.
So stability, just, stability is, it's a very, kind of like, there's a lot of definition in that stability, so stability, to me, I'm kind of looking for statistics on stability of somebody getting ahead and being able to come from the program to be a nocturnal living wage job, which we know are very scarce in the Borough of Pottstown, and then moving on successfully from there as opposed to, and I know that there are a certain segment of the population that have disabilities, that they are not going to be able to access gainful employment or living wage employment, I understand that. So I'm just looking for maybe the statistics of the differences between those groups from your programs.
So I appreciate that you came to our office a few weeks ago, and when you were in the office, I think I shared with you the data that I do have on our Housing Resource Center demonstrating that we have about a 76% rate of actually assisting people that were helping to move into housing to graduate from that program to being able to sustain their own permanent housing. We're helping them get in, get back on their feet, in whatever their form of stability is, some of them, it's working, some of them, it's connecting them to additional resources that they are eligible to use, that they don't use, there are, Food Stamps is a program that's extremely underutilized in the country, so our effort across the county is certainly to connect people to those resources that are already there for people to use that can supplement what it is that they're doing to be able to make ends meet. So some of the people that you were talking about who function on a disability income, that income's not ever really going to produce much more for them, so our effort has been to connect them, and so we can demonstrate that we've been able to connect people to additional resources, and so the day that you were in the office, I shared some of those statistics with you, I apologize I did not bring them with me.
I'm sorry, I just have two more. Did, I have, I suppose my train of thought. Oh, one of the things that I was, I heard about the Pottstown Cares and that you want to be actively involved in that, I was a little taken aback when I did meet with you guys on the 21st, that you were unfamiliar with the Pottstown Cares program when you have somebody from the Hill School on your board, but I was very happy to see you at your group at the last block planning meeting, and that you are going to participate in that.
So as I said to you, I'm sorry that I did not know about that, I have a number of staff who have a great interest in being very engaged in the Pottstown community, and so yes, I told you that now that I knew about it, that we would make an active effort, so I'm happy that you saw us there yesterday, we're excited to participate in it, and so I do want to thank Pottstown Cares, because I didn't really understand that you were actually, one of your projects is actually helping us to do some of the painting and repair work inside the building that we're talking about on that day.
That's actually rock the block, Pottstown Cares is doing the cleanup, but yes, that is the day they came.
But I was thrilled to see that we, that that house is part of that project, and I suppose that that's partly due to our board member from Habitat who helped us to put that together, but as I said, we are committed to doing, to being active in the community. I see us, as the executive director, I see us as a business in downtown Pottstown that wants to make, we want to make our neighborhood just as clean and productive as anybody else, and so we're going to do our effort to the extent that we can, we're going to do what we can.
I have a couple of things, I just went on the council note, I will be voting no in support of the letter. I worked the polls, I just got elected, and what I heard from my constituents was, we don't need more social services in town, so I can't, I represent those people, and I cannot say, yes, let's expand. Secondly, just to clarify, two years ago, just a point of, I was in the cluster volunteering for Cares Day, we helped organize the basement. And just a note, I hope, I'm glad you're presenting to the school board, your comment was, we don't benefit from the school district, what I hear from my senior citizen residents in my ward, we don't benefit from the school district either, but we still have to pay the taxes, so just putting that out there.
I would recommend to the rest of the council, if you have the opportunities to, you know, tour the building, and I met Mr. Aldool, he's gracious and considerate, posting, answering all my questions, as well as 611 Franklin Street, which is considerably disrepaired, there's a video on Facebook page if you'd like to see what I saw, at least. From my perspective, a lot of your clients or people that could come to the cluster are from my ward, so I feel responsible to look at their interest as well, and then there's a couple of people that think it's a vacuum cleaner for all the poor in Montgomery County as well, but for the most part, I don't see a better use for the building, and I'm concerned about the building itself as well, if somebody's not done to it, having another bloated, torn-up building does not do very help at home values or at all, so I prefer just to let it go through zoning.
I understand your appeal is to curtail, is one is use, and the other is parking?
Correct. And interpretations in there too, because again, I don't really think what we propose is really a social service agency provider, I would say that we do, they do do that at 57, inside the current pan, but next door, not so much, I think that's more general office.
Okay, and you don't have plans to increase now?
We do not have plans to increase staff, nor do we have plans to increase any programs. What we're doing in 57 is staying in 57, we actually intend, the building at 61 is not going to be a building that people are going to be able to just walk into, anybody, so if people are coming for services, they're coming to 57, and the staff whose offices are over in 61 are coming over to 57 to meet them. All of the tangible services are in 57, there would be no reason for us to move any of that to the other building.
Then if you have no increase in staff, what's the issue with parking?
Parking should not be an issue, it's again a borough requirement because of how many square feet we have, and office use, they suggest that we need 15 parking spaces, which we don't really need.
Actually, you don't need them.
Correct.
So you wouldn't have to cover your yard with asphalt.
Right. There's no plan to do any land development or otherwise change any impervious surface or anything like that. Hopefully, we wouldn't have to increase that.
And the parking requirement is strictly out of the, or you're asking for a variance so you don't have to meet that.
Exactly. And there's another way to get, you know, we're in discussions with some neighboring properties who may allow us to use some of their space on a shared basis, which is also permitted and encouraged, I think, by your ordinance.
Just to come back to focus on the issue, zoning hearing board obviously has a jurisdiction to render a decision. You really have three choices. One, you can, don't take any action, let the zoning hearing board hear the case and they'll decide the case based on the evidence that's presented. Second choice is to support the request and voice that support to the zoning hearing board. The third option is to vote to oppose the request and obviously voice that opinion to the zoning hearing board. So typically in the past, you'd look to the ward representative or at least the recommendation.
So we will list this for action Monday night. Would you like your wording?
I'm sorry.
How would you like the, the issue worded?
Oh, I prefer to have it just, just pass through zoning, just pass it through.
I said typically to either support or oppose.
Can, can we just discuss that a little further because, because I think that your program, you're going to have your program, your programs are not going to go away, right? You're going to service our community whether you're in 61 or not, right? You're not, your threat is I'm not going to leave and stop servicing your community because we don't have a zoning variance for a building next to us, correct?
That would be a correct statement. I, I, I'm their needle advocate. I have a ward that makes those decisions.
Oh, that's an assumption, but I would imagine. So just to Dennis's point, which, which I do agree with, 49% of the people are paying 100% of the taxes. And we are really suffering here in the borough and every property that comes off the tax rolls increases the burden for particularly the owner-occupied residents here who are just, we are just drowning in, in taxes. So, so I do have a very similar concern with Dennis and, and to that regard, I know I appreciate the services you provide, but I would also support a letter of non-support for zoning hearing board.
If I may speak to that, Mr. Armstrong, with all due respect, I mean, people, your constituents may probably, were not privy to this conversation. They, they have some misconceptions, I believe, about how things operate there and they're uninformed when they give that information to you. It becomes your responsibility to, to listen and make a, your own determination about really what's best for your community. So I would ask you to reconsider that. And social service agencies, nonprofits provide a very substantial benefit to all communities. You don't have to go all the way back to them about the IRS, why they allow them in the first place. There's significant community reason and benefits why nonprofits exist. Nonprofits that use their properties for a taxing impervious don't pay tax. The largest property owner in the borough of Pottstown is the school district and of course they don't pay tax. There are a number of others. We are a very small one. And what this organization does is try to lift people up out of the situation that they're in, food, clothing, education, and in the long run, that will have significant advantage to the borough of Pottstown. Much more than the $1,200 that they're voluntarily paying and will agree to pay for 61 or Franklin Street if they're allowed to use it, you know, as they propose.
Yeah, unfortunately, no forty years. We actually have 330 taxing properties in the borough of Pottstown.
Okay, I think it's best if we just list this for Monday evening and make a determination on that.
We appreciate allowing us all that time. We have a busy agenda and so thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
We're just going to do it that way. Okay, good evening. The Pottstown InFocus Film Festival is upon us. We have, Emily, just get through these. Pardon? Is upon us and Michael Lenhart and I have been working diligently on planning our schedule and we're happy to announce that we have a full schedule for Monday through Friday, June 6th through 10th. And we wanted to talk about our five different events. We have a special request for Friday event. Our opening night will be a kickoff at the Montgomery County Community College University Center. We're partnering with them and we'll be doing a popcorn bar with Sly Fox beer tasting and all these submissions. Everything is on Facebook, Facebook Events, so they're live now. So please, we're encouraging everybody to sign up and do that. It will be public and everything will be, right now, we're really working on obtaining the sponsors, so that'll be a nice set of events and open and free for the most part to the public. On Tuesday, we'll be having an outdoor screening I've mentioned for this, as part of also the Schuylkill River Sojourn. Sunflower Cafe will be also offering their fair through their food truck. Wednesday, June 8th, we'll be having our trivia night. Trivia night, we are still looking for interesting stories about film in Pottstown and we'll be having an emcee who does specialty trivia nights in the area at Connections on High. Something that's pretty special to me, someone that I went to school with, his name's Dartell McCray, and a friend of mine is a actor. He grew up in town and actually went to school for law, traveled to Europe and realized that he loved acting and that's what he wanted to devote his life to. He's been in a number of different TV shows and movies. He's also contacted me that he's working on a film inspired by growing up in Pottstown called Intermission. He's writing a screenplay now, looking for actors and for different ideas, trying to get that set up. And he's going to be doing his filming next month through June. He will be part of our Rising Star appearance on June 9th at the Hill School and he'll be talking to everyone about his experiences, what it's like to be in film and about creating his, his movie. And he would like to submit it to Sundance Film Festival. So I had a read of it and it's, it's really neat. And then the last event will be an award celebration, which is going to be at Still River Playhouse and we will be really turning High Street into Hollywood. And that's really the basis for our request this evening. So our request is to respectfully ask for the closing of the north side of the 200 block of High Street from Penn to Charlotte for this duration of time to set up, having our awards night gala, and also really it's bash, I want to say, you know, we're going to be having a bistro theme and offering spots for local restaurants. Sly Fox, Manatioli Steel Works to come in and invite the people that are putting these films together to really walk down an actual red carpet, invite people to take pictures, the Pottstown paparazzi, and put High Street on display for that evening. So it's a really coming together as a neat set of events and we're asking for your permission to put that on. And here's our schedule. Anything you want to add?
No, I'd just like to add that working on this has really showcased some strong organizations in town and possible collaborations. That's really been one of the major strengths of this event and developing this event is that we've seen a lot of major players work together to make this happen and showcase the best of Pottstown. I think what you're going to see with this culminating event is you're going to have an opportunity for this bustle to be going on in the street and you, especially with this being a partial road closure, you have folks that are going to be coming past and they're going to be saying, wow, what's going on in Pottstown tonight? What, what's been going on in Pottstown that this is happening? This is an opportunity to showcase our strengths and the way that Pottstown is growing. And really, that's what this whole concept is about, is putting Pottstown at the center of this festival and saying, you know, Pottstown is every town and we're worthy of the attention. It's been my pleasure to talk to some folks recently about this event that have just called into my office for other information and they say, well, maybe you can tell me what's going on in Pottstown. These are folks from actually all over the east. I had somebody call me from Georgia today. I had somebody call me from West Virginia a couple of weeks ago. And I'm able to kind of drop this information into conversations and folks are seeing that there are great things happening in Pottstown with respect to arts and culture. So that's what this event is about and I think it's going to get some notice.
Okay. I think we'll list that for action Monday evening.
Thank you. Okay, thanks, Mike.
I guess you'll be staying there. 13 is the DVR PC.
That's right, that's fine. Thank you. Okay. I believe council has, from last month, had the presentation by Mike Byase of Johnson Controls. With us tonight is John Schmidt of Johnson Controls as well. And so if there are any follow-up questions, I think we've, the preliminary audit has been provided and that information has been available for the past few weeks. So he's available for any follow-up questions concerning this program.
Okay, any comment or any questions from council? You've all had the time to review this. We did have our finance and administration meeting this afternoon and normally I would give the report on a Monday meeting. It's the consensus and agreement of the members of that committee that although as attractive as this is at this time, it is not in our best financial interest to go forward with it. And, you know, should we have to pay a higher price to relight the town next year? You know, that, that's our penalty, but we're just not in a position to take on the added debt at this time. So that would be our recommendation to council and we'll have it listed for Monday evening. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like a Rolls Royce, but even at half price, I just can't afford it right now. 14 is Montgomery County CD block grant for Laurel Street.
Sure. In 2012, the borough received a grant for Laurel Street particularly for flooding mitigation, the area of Laurel Street and South Washington Street and in parallel with industrial highway floods. And there are issues with the surcharges of Schuylkill River. We have worked with BCM on a number of studies and alternatives to mitigate that. The most recent alternative and really the solution to convey that stormwater that occurs and put in a duct bill valve came in at a much higher estimate. So we're here to request putting together an application for $150,000 in additional funding through the CDBG program. We've contacted the county regarding this project, advised them of the status and that we needed additional funds and they were amenable to rolling that into the current existing grant that we have. So we are asking your approval to move forward with that plan.
Okay. Any questions on that? And we'll add that for Monday.
And no match.
Okay. We'll add that to the list for Monday evening. How about Schuylkill River Restoration Fund Grant?
Okay. The Schuylkill River Restoration Fund helped us to install a hydrodynamic device in the borough along Franklin Street and we are monitoring that now. It is installed, it's working a little too well. What it does is take the stormwater and separate solids and other chemical pollutants. We are modifying the screen, there's nothing wrong with the unit. It's actually working very well and Doug, you're the public works director, we're making a few tweaks, but we are recommending that we go ahead with the next funding round and install a, another one of these units within the borough. We have two locations in mind, we're still analyzing that, but the request would be $35,000, which is an estimate. It does require a $15,000 match. The match is just a requirement of this grant program and there would be engineering and design associated with that, limited, but you still need to get mobilization, that kind of thing. So that is our request. It is part of our MS4 program and the more we do as part of proactive efforts, the more we can report and be in a better standing and ultimately have better water quality.
Okay.
Erica, just one question. You said the, the one that we have now is working too well. Is there anything to alleviate that, to, to give it some help?
Yes, yes. We are monitoring that and Doug, I don't know if you want to weigh in a little bit, but we're tweaking the screens.
What this does is we have two chambers. The incoming chamber takes seven or eight storm inlets and then whatever floatables, other debris comes into the first chamber. And there's a rather large screen between these two chambers and the holes through that screen are pretty small. So what's happening, any leaves or any solid material gets jammed up against the screen and the, the first chamber fills up with, it pressurizes itself and pops a lid off. So by putting a new screen in with bigger holes in it, we're going to be able to move some of that material through. Right now, it's not passing anything. So what happens when you look into one side, we've got floating all kinds of stuff on the one side and we've already got about 12 to 15 inches of debris that's been trapped in there already, which the original estimates were, this is going to take us a year to collect that much. We've gotten it in like six weeks now. But the other side, the discharge side, the water's really clear and clean. But the problem is, we've got to move some of this through because we can't have this lid popping off all the time. So the manufacturer, we've been down, we've met with the manufacturer, they, they say this happens and they just have to adjust the screen to fit the circumstances that the water quality device is in. So I'm comfortable that we're going to get this worked out. We'll have to make some tweaks on that screen and maybe the next one, still might not be just right, but they are more than willing to work with this to get it right.
Doesn't that, doesn't that have something to do with our, the storm drains? The debris that's in the storm, on the storm drains and?
Well, it has more to do with what's laying on the streets and the gutters. Because when we get a significant rain, in two significant rain events, so much stuff gets washed into the inlets and stuff and a lot of it so far has been leaves and other material like that. But you also have the styrofoam cups and the soda bottles and all the other stuff that are also trapped now in the, in the incoming chamber, which is a good thing. We're keeping that material out of the arch now, which a lot of the arches over time have accumulated quite a bit of stuff in it now, which cuts down our capacity to move the wrangler through. So overall, as we keep working with this thing, it's going to be a good thing. As Erica said, the MS4, it certainly is a positive thing for our MS4 program.
To us, the community, we could really be helpful is to pick up the trash and keep the leaves clean.
Okay, great. Any other questions? All right, we'll list that for Monday evening. How about, since you're there, how about part, the local match?
Sure. As part of our operate, as part of our operating application, every year, we have to certify our local match and our local match is derived by Montgomery and Chester County. Montgomery's 85%, Chester County's 15%. Next month, I will come forward with parts operating budget and that would begin July 1 of this year and then June 30th of 2017. But as part of our grant application, we have to put together a certification of that local match, which those amounts are listed. And that's a requirement of the state. It goes up about 5% every year.
Okay. Questions? We'll list that. 17, Transportation Community Development Initiative Grant.
Right. The, another plan that we've been working on, we've talked a lot about the carousel, Cole Brookdale, Schuylkill River Heritage Area, the trail and all these different components. And this TREC district and the vision that we've had for this collectively, we have a committee of the different stakeholders within our plan and we've been meeting over the past few months and really talking about what can we do in the short term to get together to make sure we're properly marketing these assets or once everything is in place, meaning the carousel's up and operating and the, and the train is coming into town, how are we collaborating to make sure that we're benefiting as a region on those different assets? Well, when we discussed that, we also realized there's a bigger picture here. We're entering and exiting the borough and we are not quite sure if we have in the TREC district a very distinctive sense of place, sense of arrival, great signage. Are we really sure about the total rental or, you know, different businesses? Those types of things all come into play when you're looking at heritage tourism. So as part of that, there is a program through the Delaware Valley Regional Planning Commission called the TCDI. Now, very rarely are planning grants offered in this region. It's very hard to get planning money. It's a lot more about capital and infrastructure, which is nice. But to put a plan together, we thought, you know what, we need to take a bird's eye view of some of these issues and TCDI is a program that enables you to do that. So right now, they have their 2016 grant round. And here again, just so you can see the TREC district, where this would be our focus area. We realize, like I said, when you come in from Route 100, when you're on High Street, you don't even- you don't even realize perhaps that there's a mini golf right down the road. There, the multimodal users, look at what we have right in this region. We have rail passengers, people that are riding transit, bicyclists, pedestrians. How can we weave in that interconnectedness? We need a plan to do it. And we would be looking for a study to focus on these issues. Another aspect is zoning. We're looking at the Gateway West and Park. Let's take a look at that. Do we need a zoning overlay? Do we need to rewrite anything? So the solution and what could be funded as part of the TCDI program is developing that plan. We would go out for an RFP for consultants to develop a vision plan, stakeholder outreach. You put together development scenarios. You say this is what we want out of this area. And then you put together an implementation plan that you can carve out and have that piece funded. You create a branding and marketing plan. You look at the zoning. You make that kind of analysis. And then you formulate perhaps even a streetscape or building design plan. It can go that far. But it opens up the study so that the possibilities are really endless. And we're not just looking at one project or another. It's all these projects in the Trek District. And we come out here with something very clear. We understand here we have a recreation tourism hub. It's emerging, but we all are sitting around a table saying, we need to be comprehensive. We need to analyze this. We need development strategy soon. And we want to improve the flow of goods, people, and services for maximum economic and environmental compatibility. So we would be looking at a $100,000 grant request, but a total project cost of $125,000, which is an estimate for this project. The match would be $25,000. That is just the requirement, but we can be a bit flexible. What we do have coming up in the future, not for certain, but it's expected, is the Schuylkill Highlands Grant Program, which offers $20,000 mini grants for these types of activities, for heritage tourism branding. So our committee would work together to apply for that, for this match, to be part of this program. We can also include staff time and any kind of services to a degree. And what's realistic, what we can all devote amongst our time. And we're looking at $5,000 as a doable included match. And then also, if we would need to, borough reserves, and we've talked about that, no more than $20,000 commitment if we would use that staff time. And if the Schuylkill Highlands Grant is successful, that would go away. And that is our, the conclusion. We would have to submit a application by April 22 electronically. And if you have any questions, Steve Bamford is around my corner, I believe, as well.
If not, what are you going, what are you asking?
Approval to proceed. It would be by resolution.
Seeing none, we'll list that for Monday evening.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure. While you're there, you want to tell us about the airport hangar lease assignment?
Sure. The, so last month, we had our Airport FBO, Fly Elite, who had expressed interest in our maintenance hangar, which is currently leased by Eves Aynard of Whitmer Aviation. And there needed to be a little bit of clarification because the FBO just has the intentions of using the maintenance facility for the uses specified in the current lease. And there is a provision in the current lease for a reassignment. So they're asking for council's permission, Whitmer Aviation, Eves, to put together a page to formalize a reassignment of that lease to Fly Elite Services. Chuck, do you have anything else to add?
No, I think, I think last month, the long-range plan was a little more elaborate. And additional uses were coming in under the maintenance hangar, which kicked the trigger to put it out for some kind of proposal. After they looked at that a little more, they realized that they're happy just to assign the existing lease to the new entity. Same, same function, same uses in the maintenance hangar. And I think I just saw your email, effective May 1. Is that?
Correct.
So it would be approving the assignment of the lease to Fly Elite.
Correct.
No other changes?
As is.
As is.
As is.
And as permitted.
Correct.
Any questions? All right. We'll list that for approval Monday evening. Back at our joint meetings between the Borough Council here and the school, Pottstown School Board, we were kind of anxious to move forward on the LERTA program. And the President of the School Board, Ken Stillwell, and myself agreed to form a quick ad hoc committee, rather than that putting all 16 members at the table at the same time, two from the School Board, two from council, to at least solicit questions from their surrounding contacts, come together and put together a list of suggestions for this LERTA program. Which they did. They met again this past Monday night and forwarded all four individual lists of suggestions to our borough manager. And he has accumulated them. And he'll be distributing that to our solicitor and also copies to President Stillwell so that she can do the same and distribute it to her members. And sometime this evening or electronically tomorrow, whatever, the borough manager will distribute copies of all the suggestions from the four individuals for our review. Okay. We have hard copies here. We chopped down the tree, made paper, and we have hard copies for you. Okay. Anyhow, to keep this thing moving, I would hope that we can all work together as quickly as possible. And I'd like to see our ordinance and the resolution from the School Board come together at our June joint meeting. Fair enough? Okay. Then we can dangle that out and attract all kinds of new business. Twenty-one, the Durf Family Properties.
As council knows, the borough has a process at least that allows an applicant for minor land development projects to seek a waiver of the formal land development process. In this case, unfortunately, the properties that are identified as 58 to 64 King Street had kind of undergone a parking lot expansion in the backyard, basically taking some grass area, turning into paved area, not necessarily seeking approvals or permits to do that. Now there's a parking lot in the backyard. The applicant then requested a request for waiver of land development, not really appropriate, given the work's already been done. The request went to the Planning Commission. It was reviewed by the borough engineer. And the Planning Commission and borough engineer recommended that the request for waiver of land development be denied. I think I have the same opinion based upon the fact that the work was done without any permits. So since you did receive the request for waiver of land development, at this point, for Monday night, it'd be appropriate for you to act on that. The recommendation is to deny, but certainly it's up to you.
Okay. Any questions or discussion? I'm sure Doug and Keith, both of you are here. You can walk out and you can look at that paved surface, but you can't tell whether the preparation and foundation was done correctly or anything, right? Got it. Yes, I heard it right. Okay. So we'll list this for denial Monday night? Twenty-one. Twenty-two, if you have a hard copy, the Hill School was going to be here. They have withdrawn. They'll be back at a later time. Twenty-three, Ambox Soapbox Derby, 2016.
Actually, if you don't mind, I'll handle both, both the items together. We have a request from the Ambox on, for their 22nd Annual All-American Soapbox Derby, to be held on Saturday, June the 18th of this year. Requesting permission to utilize Wilson Street Hill once again, which would require the closing of Wilson Street on Friday morning, June the 17th, at around 7:00 a.m. to prepare the track. The trial run's being held Friday during the day into the evening. And then Saturday, the racing would begin at 8:00 a.m., probably over sometime between 5:00 and 6:00 o'clock, at which time they quickly open the street back up as they've done in the past. Subsequent to that, the rain date for that will be Sunday, June the 19th. Subsequent to that, the following weekend, on Saturday, June the 25th, they are requesting permission to again close the street from 6:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. for their 18th Annual Challenge Kids Soapbox Derby Race, which is for, it's two-seater cars for a driver and children with disabilities. The street would be closed around 6:00 a.m. on the 25th and reopened by 5:00 o'clock, the rain date being the Sunday, the 26th.
Question. The Friday morning, June 17th, would it be closed Friday morning all the way through Saturday at 6:00 p.m.? Or would it reopen Friday night and then be closed again Saturday morning?
It would remain closed as it has in the news past.
And this is just a, just a request to Chief Drumheller, since you're out there. These are all great causes. I think they're wonderful. I would just ask that when Wilson Street is closed, a lot of the traffic will race around Reynolds Avenue, which sparks a lot of calls for me since it's in my ward. And the drivers are a little reckless and sometimes they're even knocking mirrors off of cars that are parked on the street. So if we could just have the police kind of in the area, monitoring traffic during that weekend and?
Chief is shaking his head back there.
Sure. All right. Thank you.
Okay. And we'll list that both for Monday evening. Next would be Janice. Twenty-five, Resolution Tax Collection Committee Delegate Appointment. Miss Lee?
It's just a recommendation from the TCC, the county-appointed park commander, that they have a delegate.
Marley Casper, the Assistant to Janice.
Okay. Any questions on this? Otherwise, we'll list it for Monday evening. Transportation Community Development Initiative?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Now, Justin Keller, the Regional Parks and Recreation Coordinator, is also planning to apply. But he's planning to apply on behalf of a few townships, I mean municipalities. So Upper Pottstown is leading this effort, but he's looking at doing a regional sign project to coincide with his regional trail work through DCNR, which he just had a public meeting about. But it's, oh yeah, it's a trail study, looking at ways to connect the surrounding townships to each other or from different residential areas to other commercial sectors, that kind of thing. But he has a lot of information about that. If you'd like, I can see if he's available to speak on Monday. But he would just be asking for a resolution of support. You have to do that if the area would be part of that study.
Okay.
And the resolution was included.
Would you like a presentation? All right. Could he, could he make it Monday?
I can certainly ask.
Sure. Okay. We'll list it.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure. Twenty-five, Resolution for Tax Collection. We did.
Just did that one.
Just did that one. Okay. Twenty-six, Powow, waiver of fees.
That would be a request from Mr. Williams for the Powow, which is going to be held on the dates of May the 7th and 8th at Memorial Park. That's a request of the waiver of the park rental fee, which I believe is $75 a day for two days, which would total $150, correct, Mr. Lenhart?
That sounds correct. If it doesn't, I guess I can.
Yes.
Can we, can we go back to the manager's report while we're addressing the fees? Because this is something we discussed last year in previous council. And every month, we're seeing more and more people coming forward to waive fees. And all the projects, everything that's done in the borough of Pottstown, I think is fantastic. I think it's great that we have all these organizations coming here and doing things. However, those fees are in place in association with, we have parks and recreation people that take care of the grounds. We have utility fees that we have to pay. That's all paid for by the taxpayer. And, you know, when we have the organizations coming in and bringing all these people, then certainly there is the opportunity to raise funds for those fees if that particular organization doesn't have the money to pay $75 or $150. I really would like to get out of the habit of waiving fees coming, going forward.
And would you like that on?
Does anybody, anybody else?
Sometimes we waive the fee, but sometimes we agree with the fee. We have to make sure who we agree and who we waive. Because so many people come in and they agree, the council agrees, but other people come in and they say no. That's what we have to make sure.
Right. I'm saying that we should stop waiving the fees entirely.
The other discussion? We'll list it for a decision Monday evening.
Now, there's, this is, this is separate from the stuff that we have for like the Memorial Day Veterans. That's already built into what they're working for Parks and Recreation. That's not something that they're coming forward to us waiving the fees. I'm talking about every organization that comes to us monthly, and there were several monthly. There was, yes, that fee waiver.
So you're saying you put the agenda for Monday?
There've been a few that were accepted for a long time. Memorial, I know the Memorial Day Parade is one of those. And I'm sure, Mark, you can look into what the others were. And those were the ongoing exceptions, but now, the trend is there. We're getting more and more and more.
I thought there was a budget line for this. I thought we had.
There is money budgeted for fee waivers, yes.
I guess what I'm asking is to take that money and put it to some, some other useful cause.
And I think the, I think the issue to Counsel Paez's point is, how do you decide who's worthy and who's not?
Within that line item.
What would you like listed, sir? Listing the Powow or the fees in general or? And there's another request from CCLU that follows this.
I just want to ask you the proposal. I mean, what, what was it?
To, to not waive the fees. So, so like you said, now we're picking and choosing who we're waiving fees for in a line item budget and just to stop waiving the fees and take that line item and put that money towards something else that, fire services, which is in desperate need. There's other areas that the money could be allocated and?
So you're saying for, for the rest of the year?
For, for, not just the rest of the year, for, yeah.
I'm saying just for this year, though. Continue the ones that we normally do it for. But the other ones, just not waiving.
Just not continue to get more and more, yeah.
Or just have a time where we just, you know, like have, say, let's off the top of my head, like September 1st. After September 1st, then we're not going to waive, or beginning of our budget year or whatever. Understand what I'm saying, as far as like not waiving fees anymore, instead of trying to pick and choose?
And it's a personal responsibility too, Joe. Like organizations, you know. I'm happy to help fundraise for anybody that, you know, needs to fundraise efforts for a good cause to get that money. And I'm just protecting the taxpayer at the same time, willing to help out an organization that might need help. There was times I paid donated fees and other of my associates have actually reached into their personal checkbook and donated fees for different activities.
I understand. And I do agree that we just almost by normal course, just waive fees, just boom, just arbitrarly, just do it. And, you know, I've felt for a while that that's something that's too robotic. And we need to look and do that. I don't know about just doing, just doing the things they know more, you know, for the rest of the year. I mean, I mean, you know, just work a little differently. Like, I don't know.
Well, we have, we have to have a time that we're going to say, okay, beginning in 2017, we're not going to waive, we're not going to waive fees anymore. You know, we're going to, the fees that we charge, we expect to be before. And that's, you know, I mean.
Then everybody's prepared going forward.
You know, you just can't like stop it now because then half the people paid and half have to pay and the other half didn't. So I think you start in a new, a new year.
Although we do, if we do, we are in that same situation though, because we only have so much money in our line item budget. We could run into a situation where, you know, where again, we're picking and choosing who we're approving, even in 2016. So I just want to be a little careful about that too.
You can't say that like, well, we have this X amount of dollars in our line, in our budget. And when that's, when we use that up, we're done. Well, how does anybody, how does the public really know? So I think that's why we have, kind of have to put like a date on it, like the beginning of the new year or whatever. And that's going to change.
Yeah, I think that's something we can probably look into next year, or, you know, just finish this year out. You know, I agree with you, 100 percent, you know, but I just don't need to start, you know, one-third of the year and say, okay, from now on.
Yeah.
Maybe, maybe next year is something we can look into, because it's definitely an issue that...
Or whenever we do our budget, something like that, you know what I mean?
That would commence next January.
Yeah.
Okay, so no need for it Monday night?
I mean, it's...
Nothing.
Then we're back to the issue.
Then we're back to...
The Powow.
Powow.
Well, that's something that we, that's something that we always did, right? I mean, that's something that we, as if it starts at...
In 2014, we waived the fees for the Powow. In 2015, there was no action in regard to the Powow.
Right. Let's, let's look into this next year, as far as changing it.
So are you in favor, or against?
Yes.
Waive it?
Yes.
Okay, list it.
We can't start, we just can't start cutting the light now, like, oh gee, now we got to do now.
And the next request is from CCLU.
Waiver fees for September.
CCLU is conducting a, on Saturday, September 24th, will be hosting Pottstown's first Latin Festival at Riverfront Park. They would like to utilize Riverfront Park and have the fees for the use of the park rental waived. They are also requesting use of the sound system, the Parks and Recreation Sound System.
Comment?
Again, same thing.
I mean, you know, if somebody's using the sound system, maybe that's a little different as opposed to, as opposed to just using, I don't know, what's close to the sound system? Any idea?
The trouble we have is that every time we go out to do music, we don't have enough equipment. And we do it two years ago, and we, we grow out the equipment that they have, that's what we need to have, the medium equipment, and obviously, we don't have anybody to buy that.
Mike, what's around for the...
That sound system would be the $75 sound system, so we call the medium sound system.
Thank you. And the park?
Park, that would be $100, so it's the same thing that we charge for the million and five.
So the numbers that we have here, and I think this is Janice's hand, right, so I'll assume she got it, $75 for the sound, $75 for the park, and $35 for the electric, does that sound right?
That sounds correct.
So $185.
I just want to go back to one thing, and even back to the Powow. You know, you, we're not looking at the effect that a large amount of people that are coming into our parks are doing to the parks, to the grass, to the, to the, and the $3,000, you said we can't cut it off. If we go over that line item budget this year, it will be cut off, no matter who comes in after that. So, so yeah, we can cut it off at that $3,000. So just that we were bringing this many people into our parks, this many people enjoying our activities, all these organizations, there was a lot that Ms. Paez listed on here that I was really impressed with. Attract many families, businesses, educational institutions, artists, dancers, musicians, college volunteers. Out of all those people that are attending our events, that we can't fundraise a little bit of money to help out a really great cause to have activities in our park to pay for the fees?
All they're going to do is collect a dollar from each one. Anyhow, do you want to list it for Monday evening, or no?
Well, I guess it has to be listed.
Okay, list it. Twenty-eight, zoning, Ice House Deli, Manhattan Intestine Street.
This is an application that's pending, involved with the zoning hearing board, seeking a number of variances with respect to parking requirements. I believe that there are, the property is somewhat unusually shaped, and I believe it's a parking that's used for the Ice House Deli. So based upon the size of the parking area and how it's shaped, they're asking for some flexibility to design the parking lot that's not in compliance with the zoning ordinance. They're also asking for the zoning hearing board to waive a land development requirement, which I don't believe the zoning hearing board has the authority to do. So at this point, it's really just asking for parking variances. You can take a position or not?
I just have a quick question. That's the, we're talking about the stone lot, that, okay, and they want to pave that? Or they just want, they want to use that lot for parking?
They want to, they want to use it for parking, and the question of how they're going to improve it is still up in the air, as far as I know.
I, I'm...
Don't they have to have a plan that they, they present to us?
Well, if, if, yes, a land development plan will need to be submitted, but this is really a zoning issue for use right now.